With the sound system. Does anybody know how tall the building's gonna be? Five stories, you think? Oh, okay, great. I'd like to call a order. The Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board here on July 6th with the Secretary. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Musich.
Present.
Commissioner Mens. Commissioner Elper.
Present.
Commissioner Abene.
Present.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
President Forney.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No move. We don't have any minutes, so we are on then to reports of officers. Superintendent Bangora, take it away.
Thank you. Oops, let me speak into this. Thank you, President Forney and Commissioners. It's great to see everybody. Before we get started, first of all, I'd like to say that we haven't had report of officers for five weeks, so I'm gonna ask for your patience as I go through some really amazing things that our park system has to offer. So it's gonna take a little bit of time, we might have to come back to it. But even before that, I see Mimi Kell, Assistant Superintendent of Recreation, and like her to introduce a new employee with us. So if you can come up, Mimi, and introduce Nicole.
Good evening, Superintendent Forney, Commissioner. Thank you. We are excited to have Nicole Hernandez, our new employee. She is on her third week. She is the new Service Area Manager over the North Side for Recreation. And she comes to us from the Children's Defense Fund, where she spent 13 years running the Freedom Schools, overseeing grants that were as much as half a million dollars, and also worked in Brooklyn Center for seven years in the Recreation and Education fields. So we're excited to have her here, and I wanted you to get a face with the name, so to speak.
Welcome, welcome.
Yay, Nicole.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so we got some really great things to share. Be patient with me. We do amazing things in our park system. I'm very excited to share these with you. So let's begin. Adult Athletics and Permits. Adult, spring and summer adult sports currently has almost 900 individuals registered in tennis, pickleball, and volleyball, and it's also running league play with over 400 additional teams in softball, soccer, and kickball. Golf, on Monday, June 27th, there was a celebration at Hyawatha Golf Course, renaming the clubhouse, the Solomon Hughes Senior Clubhouse. Super, oh, me, Superintendent Bangora. Solomon Hughes Junior, Vice President Smith, and the Minneapolis Council Member Vitale were all speakers at this historic event. It was a wonderful day and then a really historic moment. Ice Arenas. In December 2021, the Minnesota Wild and the Herb Brooks Foundation presented the NPRB with funding and construction of a dryland training center at Northeast Ice Arena. The installation on the center is set to begin in late July, with completion in August or September. This is the first of its kind in the NPRB and will be a great resource for the youth of Minneapolis. Talk about youth sports here. In 2022, Minnesota Twins Glove and Ball Giveaway was held on Wednesday, May 25th, at Potahorn Park. TC The Bear and former Twins La Troye Hawkins were on hand to present gloves and baseballs to six U and eight U players. The gloves were courtesy of the Minnesota Twins Community Fund, and the baseballs were sponsored by Maury's Automotive. 285 youth received new gloves and baseball to help start the season. Northeast and Southeast Parks. Youth at Audubon have been making their own DIY flowerpots and planting flowers to bring home. They have also started their own vegetable garden beds and are excited to grow some veggies this summer. Northside Parks, Bethune Creek View and Harrison, all hosted Juneteenth events. Northeast, Southeast Parks. Luxton hosted the Jazz at Parks and had a great turnout with about 300 people in attendance. Southwest Parks. Pershing hosted over 70 adults and kids at their community, at their monthly community bonding events. Families brought a picnic dinner, and Pershing provided multiple yard games, popcorn cookies, lemonade, and water. Spark Studios. Programming. The Potahorn Spark Studio is offering summer programs that include youth storytelling, open studio activities on Friday evenings, and creative arts. Check out the new studio door at Potahorn. Youth can see the studio door from the gym, providing better access to the studio, also highlighting artists from Harrison Park's Juneteenth event. Youth Funding Position Updates. Eight positions have been hired. Six youth program specialists, one youth technology and career skills manager for the Spark Studios, one youth technology and career skills specialist at Spark Studios, and six positions are posted and seeking applicants. Two youth program specialists, two youth technology and career skills specialists for the Spark Studios, and two naturalist program coordinators. Five positions are nearing the final job description and are being posted. Those are for the five recreation program leads. So we're on our way and moving as quickly as we can, and thank you to HR. It's a lot of work, especially in the summer, doing a great job, so thank you for that. Visitor Services. Downtown Parks. Movies and Music and Movies in the Park. Concerts on Tuesday at Waterworks, movies every Wednesday at the Commons, and concerts every Thursday at the Commons. Partnerships with the Twin Cities Black Film Festival, showing movies at Waterworks, 55 in attendance. Series of Opera Under the Stars offering on the Fourth of July, show with more than 150 people. Movies at the Commons with consistent attendance to over 100 people during the events. Fourth of July Events. Logan Park had magicians wows, the audience, and artists drawing caricatures. Other fun activities included a balloon artist and live music by the newfound locos. Victory Park had balloon artist, lawn games, Australian magician, and other family fun interactivities. Lake Nicomus Recreation Center and Lake Harriet were also Fourth of July locations. They hosted families, activities, ice cream, kids DJ, and live music. I attended two of those events, and they were really, really fun. And my son learned a new magic trick, which was fun too, so he's practicing on me. So, but it was really great events, very exciting. Archives. It is exciting to report that the project to digitize the Eloise Butler Wildflower Garden Florogym was recently completed. The Park Board's collection of artworks depicting plants as a visual historical record of flora is housed in the NPRB Archives. And our continued partnership with the Minnesota School of Botanical Art provided for the creation of high-resolution scans of all 87 illustrations in the collection. Copies of the digital files will be stored on a secure network server administered by the Archives to ensure their long-term preservation. Pictured at right, wild plume, boy, I'm not gonna pronounce this, Prunus Americana by artist Marilyn Garber. Really cool work that we're doing. A disaster response kit was recently added to the Archives' storage area in accordance with the Archives' emergency preparedness and recovery plan. The kit is meant to aid staff in the care of historic collections and the unfortunate event of a disaster such as water, fire, or mold. And this is one more thing that we have. Archives Continued. Other great stories from the NPRB Archives from the Employee Newsletter. This quarter include highlights from the 2001, 2002, or 2000, was May 22, oh, 2002, Juneteenth Celebration. In May, the NPRB Archives helped facilitate the loan of the Bell from the USS Minneapolis, which was in storage in the Archives, to Duluth for the commissioning of the USS Minneapolis St. Paul, a littoral combat ship. Research on historic implementation of the L Will Law will be reported to the Racial Equity Action Plan Working Group later this month. Forestry. The Forestry Department partnered with the Whittier International Elementary School by holding a tree-climbing event on the Fourth and Fifth, for Fourth and Fifth Graders. Students learned about the work performed by arborists and the equipment needed to safely climb a tree. Forestry staff displayed great patience and encouragement while teaching the students, some of which were understandably scared to participate. We expected to do more of the engagement and outreach efforts expanded. Environmental Management. Teen Team Works. A brand-new sign at the Solomon Hughes Senior Clubhouse was hit by a car last week. Dan Falk, the foreman for the carpentry shop, provided training to the Teen Team Works Power Crews, ages 16-plus, on how to set posts and reinstall the sign. The Power Crew will put this training to use and will install more park signs, park name sign systems, this summer. There's quite a stack in the paint shop that are currently waiting to be installed. This work and training is all part of our goal to provide teens with more exposure to potential career paths within NPRB. Thank you to the carpentry shop for getting teens involved. And that was actually done when we were there doing the Solomon Hughes Senior Clubhouse. It was down, and so we have some Teen Team Works now that have done the work and installed it. So really exciting to see the work that's being done. Conservation Corps Minnesota and Iowa Crew begins summer work at NPRB. Conservation Corps Minnesota and Iowa's Youth Outdoors Crew started their 2022 work with Environmental Management's Natural Resources Work Group in June this year. This, the crew consisting of five young adults, will work with the NPRB for three months. The Conservation Corps Crew has been hard at work doing routine maintenance on the systems-managed natural areas with a focus on removal of invasive species. A target invasive species this summer has been the leafy spurge, an aggressive prairie invader, whose seed pods can send its seeds flying to up to 20 feet. Later this summer, the crew will continue to important work of identifying and controlling Oriental Bittersweet throughout the system. Oriental Bittersweet is a priority target due to the damage it can cause to tree canopies because of its tendency to twine around the girdle of trees and shrubs. The crew will also assist in the Community Gardens Program and help lead and support volunteer events. And just pictured there, you'll see the Conservation Crew pulling leafy spurge at the North Mississippi Park, the crew assisting with volunteer work at Cedar Lake Park, and the crew assisting at the Shalom Community Garden. So thank you to that group, it's been great work. Asset Management Data Collection. During the summer months, keep an eye out for interns from the Asset Management's Data Collection and Analysis Team as they gather data on all of our park assets. The data will be utilized to establish the foundational knowledge for our lifecycle maintenance programs, as well as to better understand maintenance and rehabilitation needs. Asset Management staff and interns have already collected attributes, pictures, and condition asset assessments on 3,500 benches, 300 bike rats, 150 drinking fountains, and 4,300 lights, and thousands of other park assets. Tremendous work, and very grateful for that, and this will be a great addition to our assets and how we can track what we have. Northeast Service Area. Boom Island Docks. On May 11th, Asset Management staff installed floating docks at the Boom Island Marina. This work was coordinated effort among NPRB staff, City of Minneapolis crane operators, and a diver. This year, we replaced one of the six docks with a newly-built dock purchased from Mencor, or Minnesota Department of Corrections. We would like to thank Josh King, Josh Keller, Sam Highland, Kyle Matus, oh, boy, Matusiski? Jeremy, I'm sure that I can, and Mike Volker for their hard work and consistent monitoring of the dock. Thank you for Thad Weber, who coordinated with Mencor to get the new dock made. All right. Jim Lupien Waterpark. The Northeast Asset Management Team began preparing Jim Lupien Waterpark for the season launch on June 11th. It's exciting to watch the pool fill up as the water slides and water features are turned on for the first time each season. Doug Moburg, Kyle Pearson, Leaf Rona, Gunther Boone, and Jeff "Captain" Fugini deserve special thanks for their contributions to this process. Citywide Operations. Bank Erosion Rehabilitation Project along 35W and Minnehaw Creek. The bank in this region has been undermined by the Minnehaw Creek. After working through necessary engineering and watershed permits, our mechanical equipment operators, MEOs, Michael Swiger, Crew Leader, and Shane Oberg and Brian Ansel, worked to stabilize the bank, prevent further erosion, and repaired the damaged bike path. As a result of the restoration effort, the bike trail is now safe to use, and the embankment is stable. Great work, so thank you to them very much. Great work on that. Paint Shop. Loring Park Shuffleboard Refresh. On May 31st, Bobby Bryant and Tom Rakos from the Paint Shop scraped and painted the shuffleboard courts at Loring Park. The Paint Shop foreman, Moze Ore, worked with Julie Smith, Loring Park Director, to schedule this work to be completed before the shuffleboard league started in early June. The shuffleboard court had not been painted for over 10 years. The Loring Park Shuffleboard Court, the LPSC, that was established in 1939, members were very excited to get them back into play conditions. Jim Mark and other members of the Loring Park Social Club extended their heartfelt gratitude to the NPRB team for this fine work. Great things happening at Loring, at the tennis courts and everything. It's gonna be really exciting to see how the projects come together there. So very excited about that. NPRB Annual Exhibits. May is often a busy month for our gardens, with annuals being planted all over Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board systems. Every year, there are three large annual exhibits. The Longfellow Gardens near Minnehaw Falls, Lindo Park's Annual Perennial near Lake Harriet, and the Loring Park's Garden of the Seasons on the outskirts of Downtown all have them. So great work again by our crews in that work. It's really beautiful. Join us on July 13th to celebrate the new pump track at Perkins Hill Park. Very exciting. The Minneapolis Park Recreation Board is excited to announce a July 13th opening celebration for the new pump track at Perkins Hill Park, 334th Avenue North in Minneapolis McKinley Park Neighborhood. There is ribbon cutting at 5:00 PM and will include remarks from myself and NPRB Commissioners. It takes place in conjunction with Cycling 101, part of NPRB's Cycling in the Summer Bike Event Series from 4:00 to 6:00. Cycling 101 features a youth-focused bike rodeo hosted by the Minneapolis Park Police, bike mechanics teaching basic maintenance and repair skills, BMX demos, and a big air show to put an awe in the awesome experience. We hope to see everybody there at this really amazing pump track, and very excited to see it happen, so please join us. North Commons. Park Phase 1 Improvements. NPRB and the Design Consultant Team hosted a week-long Design Week for the North Commons Park Phase 1 Improvements Project. Stretching from June 27th through the 30th, there were three opportunities for the public to join us and collaborate on this design process. In the coming months, the team will release multiple concept plans and again engage the public around these options, which will lead to the release of a preferred concept for the public to comment on and for the board to review. Thank you to all the commissioners, staff, and the public that participated in these important design concepts. Marcy Park Improvement Project. Construction is set to begin in July for park improvements at Marcy Park. These improvements include the addition of a dog park and full-court basketball, site furnishings, upgrades to the electrical services, and upgraded lighting and trails. Construction is anticipated to be completed in late fall 2022. The 28th Street Totlot Park Improvements Project. Community Engagement for Site Improvements on the 28th Street Totlot will be underway in July through the fall. The site previously hosted a small playground with some green space but had been serving a construction staging by Min.I-35W Project for the past several years. Now that the Min.Project is complete, the site will be improved as park space. The master plan for the site includes a first of its kind for NPRB, the DIY skate park, a small play area, native landscaping, site furnishings, and public art opportunities. Van Cleve Improvements. Construction is complete for playground improvements at Van Cleve Park. The new playground has already been a hit with the neighborhood kids, and a grand opening is being planned with the community to celebrate the new place space later in July. A few more, I'm almost there. Northeast Athletic Field Park Playground. Construction is complete for playground improvements at Northeast Athletic Field Park. The new playground has already been a hit with the neighborhood and school kids. A grand opening is being planned with the community to celebrate the new place space July 11th to coincide with other planned park events that evening. And, I think this is the last one of these, and we'll turn to our next topic. Father Hennepin Bluff Park Improvements. Construction has been underway since this spring, and the project remains on schedule. Most of the playground, or underground utilities have been installed. During this work, an onsite archaeologist has been observing and excavating and monitoring for any historical elements from past early site development that might be unearthed. There have been a couple of instances during some of the excavation when remnants from past settlements have been unearthed. Let's see here. The materials were classified, gathered for processing, and the work allowed to continue. Work on the building has gone really well, with the block walls up and the steel canopy in place. Two areas of the park remain open during construction to allow the public space to use. So with that, that is my report for the incredible work that we do in the park system and events. And at this time, I believe I will have Joelle Allen, if we have time. Yes, we do. I think we have 10 minutes if I have any to come up and talk about our current search with Assistance Superintendent of Recreation, so welcome, Joelle.
Welcome, Joelle Allen.
Thank you for having me. So, President Forney, Superintendent Commissioners, glad to be here and give you some information on the search. As you know, we are doing a search for the Assistant Superintendent of Recreation, and as is the case with most searches going on across our nation, in every industry, in every company, searches are taking a lot longer than they have in the past. And in addition to that, we are seeing a lot fewer candidates. When we think about this great resignation, it's not really a resignation, it was a great reevaluation. And so candidates are being a little more choosy about what they go to, and they are really starting to assess what work means. So I give that context to you as we kind of go into our search. We have extended the deadline for this search until July 31st. It's the end of the month. We are starting to see candidates. The vast majority of our candidates really come from us sourcing to begin with. And so we looked at this as almost a relaunch. Now, we do have some candidates in queue that I think are promising, but we like to have a full slate of highly qualified candidates before we do that. So with that, that's kind of just the groundwork in terms of where we are with the search. What we will look at for next steps is going into our further screening and interviewing process. We've already done some focus groups at the Park Board, talking to kind of key folks. We've also talked to key folks in the industry in terms of what trends that we're seeing. And so that has been really promising. We'll go into our screening, we'll present candidates, and then we'll make sure that we have an opportunity for folks at the Park Board to participate in some of those interviews. So that is my very brief rundown of the search. I'm happy to take questions if you're okay with that.
Great. Any questions of? Yep, thank you. Vice President Smith.
Thank you. I know you said that you guys did a focus group in the parks with the staff. Have you done anything in the community as it relates to this position?
So we have. And keep in mind, we have two kind of things going on. So we're looking at the Assistant Superintendent of Recreation, but we're also looking at a community engagement piece as well. And so it is our regular kind of process to go into different places in the community and talk to different organizations who would frequent the parks, right? And so that's part of this search as well.
Like, can you tell me some of those organizations that you spoke to? Because I wasn't aware that the job had actually posted. Last I heard, y'all were still conducting internal gatherings, so.
Yep.
This is news, and I'd be interested to widen the net to some really amazing people within the city.
Absolutely. So typically, what we will do is we will call organizations, we'll call into those organizations, and we'll do private focus groups. Those focus groups are typically three to five people, because that's the only way that you can really get some real information. What I will say is that while we are, you know, we're never quite done with that piece of it, because we're always looking for additional information. If you have folks that you think that we need to talk to, to just let me know, and I'd be happy to do that if we haven't talked to them already.
Yeah, I appreciate it. No, I'm just curious, like, where can people find it besides the NPRB? So like, what does your reach in terms of being a search firm look like for people in Recreation or youth development in this city? Just knowing, like, I know this city pretty well, knowing we have some really amazing folks, and so what type of postings? Like, where will we find this posting? Like, what organizations are sharing it? What is the diversity in terms of the racial and ethnic makeup? And in terms of women as well? What does that look like? That'd be all of my questions.
Sure. So what I will tell you is, when we think about having a low number of candidates, keep in mind, we're talking about a low number of candidates based on what we'd want to see at this time, who are qualified candidates, right? So we've had 300 people check out this posting, right? But those aren't necessarily all the people that we want to see with this. In terms of our reach as a search firm, we are a nationwide search firm, and so have done that for a long time. We make sure that we tap into all of the different park-related organizations in RPA, that kind of thing. We'll call into other park systems too, to see who's doing what, both for candidates, but also for information gathering as well. Did I answer all of your questions? It seems like there were a couple more in there, and I think I'm missing some of them.
I think just about the diversity of where the posting is being shared out, so that we're getting a wide scope of candidates, so that obviously they're able to serve all of the folks that is in our parks.
Absolutely. So at our core, we are a search firm that focuses on equity. This has been part of who we are for the 20 years that we've been in business. And so we make a concerted effort to make sure that we have a slate of candidates that's fully representative of the entire slate that we would expect to see in the parks. So we are reaching out, or we have reached out, to indigenous communities, to Latino communities, to Black and Brown communities, both African-Americans and African-born, right? And so we go through Asian communities, go through the gamut. And we're really intentional about making sure that when we are missing a perspective, then we find it, right? So if we don't have anybody from the LGBT community, and we haven't talked to anybody from that community, then we're going to seek out that additional perspective, because from our perspective, until you have the full slate of folks, then you really don't have the best candidates, because you haven't seen them. So that's kind of part of our process. Thank you.
In our last three minutes here, Commissioner Elper.
Thank you. I had two questions, one of which was related to the position description, and I was surprised. I noticed there's, it seems to be a heavy emphasis on technology.
Yep.
And as a mom of a kid who spent better half of a school year on, on, on technology, I'm just, you know, was sort of surprised to see that. So I just wanted, wondered if you could speak a little bit to that aspect. And then also, I'm just curious, what, what determines a qualified candidate? Thank you.
Yeah. So when we start to develop the position description, right, a lot of that we get from what's been here before, right? So, you know, we had that old position description. We also look at, what does the Park Board need, not for right now, but what does the next five years hold, right? And how are things changing within the industry? One of the things that we know that is a nationwide trend is this convergence of technology and green space and what that means. And particularly, when we start talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, it is one of the ways that we've seen diverse peoples be able to better access the park. So that's why you see that emphasis on technology. One of the things that, you know, we've worked with the Park Board actually over the years quite a bit, so we know the organization really well. We have a really good handle on what it would take to get a traditional Assistant Superintendent of Recreation, for example. So you'll see it a tiny bit over-indexed on technology, because that's what we want to bring out. What we know is that those two skills are not two skills that we see together a lot. What we know is that those two skills are not two skills that we see together a lot. People aren't trained in that. So we're trying to make sure that we attract those people and bring them out. Yeah. Oh, in terms of qualified candidate. So as we finalize that position description, and keep in mind, this takes all of the input, right, that we've gotten from various groups. Not only from this search, but from the last search that we did. We did this same search a few years ago, and we brought out those notes, and some of those notes are also still relevant. We look at what does, what does it require, right? And what are the must-haves at entry? And then what are the nice-to-haves? And what are the things that are going to be sustainable for the future? And that's how we start to determine what a qualified candidate is. We rank those candidates, and then we present the top candidates.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Really, I really appreciate that insight. And in acknowledgement to the superintendent's report, we're going to go into open town, but I would like to have a question of, how are we doing as far as, not only for our youth programming, but, you know, are we getting a pool of applicants? How are things looking on that? So I don't know that we're asking you that, but if I could have a, I know Director Brooks isn't here, but I know it's challenging times, and we thank you for your work.
Absolutely.
Good to see you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I am going to open our open time here, and I'll read our open time rules, which are, thanks to all of you who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during open time. Before we start, I want to provide an abbreviated version of the open time board rules. All individuals wishing to speak may call in before noon the day of the meeting to be placed on the agenda, and can sign up at the board meeting prior to the start of open time. I will be calling on people on signup list only. Open time for the public is for a public input, shall not exceed a total of 15 minutes, with all time limit to be allocated by me, the president. Please watch the timer right up here, to be considerate of others here to pre-speak and stay within your allotted time. During open time, public testimony will be given without debate, and only clarifying questions from the board will be allowed. Two types of items are not appropriate for open time in order to protect the privacy of all individuals. Those are pending litigation and personnel issues. Please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issue. We will not tolerate discriminatory or harassing words directed at anyone. So please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with this policy. And we have six people, so I'm going to allow each person to have, I'll say, three minutes, okay, each. And I just want to remind people, we do have some sound issues, so please make sure to talk directly into the microphone. So I'm going to begin with Constance Peppin, and after that, it's going to be Stephen Greenfield. Welcome, Constance.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Sometimes I'm too close to the mic, and then it gets all staticky. My name is Constance Peppin, and I'm in Park District 6, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And I, before I start on the topic I came to talk about, I just want to give a quick shout-out and thank you to Michael Schroeder for his support of a partnership that the Friends of Roberts Bird Sanctuary wants to enter into with the park board, which I believe you'll be considering tonight for, to build a wooden deck at the Roberts Bird Sanctuary. And we really appreciated all of his time and attention. So I sent an email earlier to you related to concerns about a list of trees that were included in the Green Minneapolis Carbon Credits Project. And I hope you, if you haven't read it, I hope you have a chance to. I apologize, it's kind of lengthy, but we're really trying to make the case about why the concerns of the conservation groups and the environmentalists are so important for you to consider. I'm sorry you couldn't hear me. And I just want to say, the only way that we can sustain biodiversity in our parks, which as you know is a major, major issue now, is by supporting nature's food chain. And native species of trees are essential, because native bugs and birds evolve with those native trees. And they don't feed on other, on trees from other continents. That's why, that's one of the reasons why people sometimes like trees from other continents around, because bugs won't eat them. But we need the bugs to be eating. That's a good sign that we've got a healthy insect population. And every ginkgo planted is a missed opportunity to support insects, birds, and ecological function. Forestry has a goal of diversity, but we need biodiversity. And I was really alarmed to see not only a lot of ginkgos and Japanese tree lilacs, which are, how much time do I have left? Because.
Sorry, just gave you a minute.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So biodiversity is what we need. Diversity, I think of it as like a meal at McDonald's. You can go to McDonald's, and you can have a diverse meal. You can have carbohydrates, protein, and vegetables. But no, it's not a healthy diet. And that's kind of the case with these non-native trees, especially from other continents. I'm really talking about trees from other continents, because North American trees are, a lot of them are migrating, or some of the species are migrating north. And we're happy that, you know, that if the park board wants to plant climate change, climate adaptive trees, that's great. But they often use the rationale that they're going to plant native, non-native trees in places where you can't plant a native tree. But we see these ginkgos all over. We see them on the boulevards, we see them right outside of Roberts Bird Sanctuary, where we really need oak trees. And so we're really asking that, as this process advances, the tree planting and some of the work that you intend to do, please do not allow species from other continents to be planted, and certainly not invasive species. I saw three, just taking a quick scan of the plant list, there were three invasive trees on the list that are either understudied for escaping into natural areas, or already known to be invasive and put on lists. And those are the amber cork tree, the amber maple, and the Japanese tree lilac. So I really appreciate the time to share this concern with you and ask that you really engage in more discussion about what is being planted in our park system. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Stephen Greenfield is next, and Sally Galette is next.
Hello, President Forney, Commissioner Ben-Gurah, and Commissioners and staff. I mostly have a question for the park board. Sort of simple one, because as president of the Friends of Roberts Bird Sanctuary, I'm continually asked this question, which is, this is from people who see helicopters dropping pellets into the sanctuary. Why is the park board using pesticides in a bird sanctuary? In short, why are they using any insecticide when almost all birds need to feed on midges and mosquitoes and other insects that are killed by these insecticides used? First, it was the biological control, BTI, and now the chemical, methoprine. This will be no surprise to the park board, since you previously, many years back, took the initiative to opt out from pesticide treatments and even sampling for the vectors of the mosquitoes that could carry West Nile virus in the Eloise Butler Wildflower Garden, the other sanctuary in the system. So this is, this is nothing new. I've had numerous communications over the years, by the way, with Alex Carlson at the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District, who's been very helpful and very responsive to questions about this very same issue. He's sometimes corrected my information, usually confirmed it, and is really, you know, sort of an exemplary representative of a public, public board. However, he did explain to me, and the one time I mentioned questions about the policy at Roberts, that he could not settle that or discuss that with me, that I had to come to the park board, who is, after all, their client on this. So we have written numerous letters over several years, just asking some version of this question, but have never received a response. It's increasingly well documented that bird populations are in addressic decline, triggered in part by what has been called the, quote, "insect apocalypse," unquote. But again, the park board already knows this, because you decided on your own volition to remove Eloise Butler from these, from those operations, and you really should do the same for Roberts. We call for that to be done right away, or at least give us some good reasons why Roberts is different. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Sally Galette, and then after that will be John Case.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. And what I'm going to talk about might be moot, because I want to talk about the pilot Open Parkways Initiative. And I understand that was not moved forward, but I don't know where it is. I'm part of the Lake Hurriet Environment Council, and one of my colleagues sent you a letter that you hopefully have read. We are opposed to closing the parkways to cars. It's interesting, it says it's an open parkways pilot, when what it does is closes the parkways to cars. We know that there are adequate walking paths, adequate bike paths, and also bicycles can go in the streets as well. What this proposal would do, and I don't know if it will be revisited in other forms or for other places, is to make the parkways exclusionary. That means people who are old, like me, who have fake knees and sore knees, who is not so good on her bike anymore, won't be able to access the parkways. Or people who just don't have bikes or have the initiative. The other thing is, how do you get around? You know, it's a good way to get around the cities without going on the freeways. Some people don't drive on freeways. It's kind of interesting, there are quite a few of us in our council who live on the parkway, and we are opposed to closing the parkway to automobile traffic. It would be lovely if there were no cars parked in front of my house. It would be lovely if I didn't hear an occasional really loud motorcycle, or the guy that does the opera music blasting. I actually kind of enjoy that one. But the parkway is not just for us, who have the great, good fortune to live on the parkway. It is for everyone. And we would like to see that that stays for everyone, and there are a whole lot of reasons that got written down in our, in our letter to you, but, you know, hopefully we'll have less emissions in cars as they get better. And it's just important to keep this historic grand rounds as a grand round. And I really hope that what I hear, that it's not going forward, is true, and that it doesn't come up again. And I would guess that it might come up again, because I know that the bike lobby is pretty strong in advocating what they want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally. John Case, and then after that is Mike Tate. John Case?
John Case.
John Case?
Hi there. I too am here to voice in opposition to your closing of River Road for bicycle and pedestrian traffic. I live on 46th Avenue, which is the avenue that runs parallel to the River Road from the Falls to Lake Street. And as we found with Governor Walz's designation of that River Road being a pedestrian bicycle way, is that my avenue, 46th Avenue, is the detour right route for hundreds and hundreds of vehicles that are doing nothing but trying to get around this mess. And it creates a lot of mirrors missing from vans, occasional complaint of an animal hit, doors you can't open when the traffic goes through. When cars in my neighborhood are parked on the street, you have to go through single file, letting the oncoming car through if you have space to allow it to come through. That's the way it works now. The way it worked with the COVID closure was, it's like paying chicken. Who gets through, gets through. And I don't, I bicycled myself. I use the already routes that are there, the greenway, the marked aisles on the, on the road. I don't race like I see now, groups of five or six going on the, on the roadway at, above the posted speed, I might say, and through the stop signs. And I'm sure they'd love to have the highway to themselves, but it's not for them. We're the taxpayers, and our traffic that travels on that road is tax-paying traffic. I don't see any licensing, or insurance, or anything that's posted for, for the bicycles. They're not all that safe. But that's about what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mike Tate, our favorite coach. And then after that is Bee Ammons. I'm not sure. Oh, thank you.
President McForney and fellow commissioners, Coach Tate is here to speak about the Hall and Farwell departure from being built, as it popped on my screen yesterday. I don't know if the community even knows that it won't be built because of costs. We're going to rebid it next year. Coach is so sick of hearing this diversity, equity, and inclusion BS. Y'all need to really stop. I remember when that word was introduced by Ms. Jane Miller, and it took an act of God to get the last commissioners who thought they were equity diverse and included, and they're all gone, except for you two. It's a shame we're back here again, doing the same thing that that previous board did around equity, diversity, and inclusion for the people in the city, but particularly my North Side community. You're going to stop a project based on something I fought for, the Neighborhood Park Plan, $300 million, six, seven years ago, Brian Rice, Ms. Rango, you two, and say it costs too much? What do you think it's going to be next year? You think the price is coming down? Or you think it's going to go up? In your mindset, just common sense stuff. Who did you let know? You just asked Ms. Fifth about this job. Well, how many else do you don't know about this job that's supposed to be posted? And who the folks are doing the hiring? How much undercover stuff is going on in this building? Because they're finna use me as a fundraiser. But I'm not included in this. I drove the ball up the hill to get the money to build North Comets. Al didn't do it, Brian Rice didn't do it, you two didn't do it, and she didn't either. And none of y'all were here. So I promise you, this doesn't go away as they use my name, my story, to raise another, I don't know, 25 million? You call it, brother. I don't care, because I need the park. My North Side needs the new North Comets, the Civic Center, not a rec center. Stop it. The governor called it a civic center. I got it on tape. So I ask you all, look inside your hearts, and really use diversity, excuse me, and equity as something that is real and not fake. Because I ain't going nowhere. I've been doing this 43 years, some of y'all wasn't even born. I ain't going nowhere. I'll be back.
Thank you. Bee Ammons? Oh, it just says Bee here. Thank you. Welcome, welcome. Bernadette, I understand?
It is Bernadette. Sorry, I was late, so it's just Bee. But it is Bernadette Ammons, and I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be, because I just heard about, about the Parkway Initiative this afternoon, so I'm a little behind. But I liked what I heard. We live on 44th Avenue. We have, for 25 years, raised two boys. My grandparents immigrated to Minneapolis in 1900. It's very important to me and to my family. When we closed the Parkway for COVID, it was a nightmare. We, we had to drive on residential streets, balls between parked cars, kids running in the street. It was terrifying, because we just had to navigate our. It was terrifying because we just had to navigate our way in and out of the neighborhood. And that was just a safety issue, but I don't understand what the purpose is. There's bike lanes, there's pedestrian lanes, and there's drive lanes. And we all pay taxes, and so I don't know why we're picking and choosing who gets the benefit of the parkway. We have elderly family that aren't going to ride a bike, aren't going to walk a couple blocks, but would like to see the Falls, would like to drive around my neighborhood. I guess we just see the houses. So I've just let my neighbors know as well. And if I got the information right on the address, it seems to stop before it gets to the city lakes. So we're not going to continue the parkway blocking for streets for the city lakes just over by the river. So I don't, I mean, I don't even understand what half of this means. You know, my, my husband's from Evanston, Chicago. And before I came, he said, don't forget to say, Chicago was built so everybody could see the lake. That's why they call it Lake Shore Drive. And everybody who lives in Chicago has access to the lake. And I don't want to be put in a position to be dodging cars, bikes, parked cars, you know, on the side streets, on the residential streets. I don't even understand it. So I read it real quickly before I came in here, but I just heard about it. So if I heard Ms. Sally say it's been tabled, that'd be nice to hear. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bernadette. Bernadette, John, and Sally, your concerns? If you would like to talk to Assistant Superintendent Schroeder, he can maybe tell you, you know, where we are at with that. Or if you want to, Dawn is over here, our communications director, either one of them. Please feel free to chat with them. With that, I will close then the open time and go back to the superintendent's report. I just, you know, if anybody has any insights, I see superintendent looking at the deputy superintendent, whoever, if you have any. I know it's been a struggle for everybody to find people, for applicants. And if you just have any insights, we would appreciate that, hearing that.
President Forni, Superintendent Bangora, I think I heard the question as I was moving to grab the, the sign-in sheet, that you're wondering what applicant numbers have been like for different positions? I only have one of them firmly in my mind at the moment, but I'm wondering if Mimi might know anything about the applicant positions in recreation. What I can tell you is we just closed the application for the downtown version of the rec center position. So you think of the folks who run the rec centers, this is the person who will run the waterworks and commons. We had 63 applicants for that position. So we're pretty excited about that. And we've seen, you know, some jobs in general be really high. A lot of the recreation jobs have come in really high. Where we have seen a little bit of struggles has been in some of the finance-related jobs. We've also had really high turnouts in many of our IT-related jobs. But I don't have those numbers off the top of my head in the same way that I've got 63 applicants for the downtown job, which we're pretty excited about and look forward to that. But I don't know if Mimi's here, and she might know, she's more closely aligned with the jobs that have been posted as part of the youth, the youth funding.
Thank you for a little bit of encouragement. I think we all need to hear that.
President Forni, Commissioners Deppes, Superintendent Ringel. Yes, most of our full-time position openings that have taken place have been pretty decent application pools as far as that meet the minimum qualifications. I would say minimum 30, and we've had as many as the two athletic specialists we just, or three athletic specialist positions that were just posted and hired, had 80 applicants that qualified. So I think it's going fairly well. It's more the certified part-time positions or the childcare part-time positions where there's a struggle with, with people, you know, signing on for an interview and then not showing up. I know we had like five that didn't show up to one of the childcare interview panel or interview experiences. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. I think everybody's aware that we're having employment issues across the world for that matter, anyway. So, okay, with that, then I will move to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, and committees. Anybody have anything that they want to report? Oh, yay, Commissioner Abene.
Thank you, President Forni. I attended the City of Minneapolis Audit Committee meeting on June 27. Among other business, the committee received a progress report for the Minneapolis Police Department Field Training Officer Program. This program was selected for audit in June of 2020, and the audit was completed the following June when it was turned over to the department. Under new program leadership, the MPD has implemented the recommendations from the audit, and the field training officer program is functioning, functioning more effectively and transparently. This new field training officer program is viewed as an important component of the ongoing culture change that's needed in MPD. I wanted to recognize Committee Chair, Councilmember Palmasano for her leadership in this area, and Commissioner Musich for her work on this when she previously served on the committee. Another item of interest was related to the new executive mayor structure. There's a pilot program to add a legislative support function to the city auditor because the audit department is independent and nonpartisan. It was surprising to me to learn that there currently is no centralized oversight for the preparation of legislation, including understanding fiscal implications of proposed and new legislation. So in my opinion, it's good that the city has identified the need to change this. Thank you.
Ooh, great report. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Commissioner Shaefer.
I attended the MEA trustee board meeting on June 16. This was their first gathering that they had after COVID, so there was a real sense of excitement. And I know some of us in the room were, were at that meeting with me. They were very appreciative of our partnership with NPRB, and then there's a lot of exciting things ahead for them. One of the struggles they discussed is communicating a sense of safety as they are bringing people back to the museum. And originally, it was around COVID measures, and now it has switched to general city safety. And we have a role to encourage and play with them with Washburn Fair Oaks. So, and they are forming a safety committee in the future to discuss this topic. We all received an invitation from Superintendent Bangora about the trustee board meeting that was scheduled with all of the commissioners, so I would hope that we can all attend. The date will be on the 18th from 5:30 to 7:00. And MEA will be hosting. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Oh, I love it. All right. Seeing no other lights and everything, we will move then into our consent agenda. Are there any items that commissioners wish for pulled to be for discussion or seeing anything? I will then take a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
I'll move resolutions 2022-236, 2022-240, 2022-221, 2022-222, 2022-226, 2022-227, 2022-230, 2022-229, 2022-231, 2022-232, 2022-234. Can I get a second?
That's a lot of 2022s. Thank you. Not seeing any lights, okay? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we are on to the planning committee. Take it away, Co-Chair Abene.
Thank you. On behalf of the planning committee, I'd like to move resolution 2022-223, resolution approving the playground concept plan for McCray Park and amending the McCray Park portion of the South Service Area Master Plan.
Second. I'll just hear in a second. Thank you. Does anybody want any presentation or discussion on the item? I'm not seeing any lights. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, on to administration and finance. Who gets the pleasure this time?
I would like to, on behalf of the Administration of Finance Committee, move resolution 2022-192, resolution approving the fundraising agreement between the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board and the Friends of Robert's Bird Sanctuary, related to fundraising intended to support construction of a wooden deck at the visitor's shelter of Thomas Sadler Robert's Bird Sanctuary, a part of the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Parks, and allocating $20,000 from the East Harriet Neighborhood portion of the Dibble Hornstein Parkland Dedication Fund.
A second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, I think I heard a second.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Abene.
I mean, I just want a rah rah, President Forni. But, and actually, we had Constance Peppin speak about it tonight, too, but I've been hearing good things about the collaboration between the staff and the Friends of Robert Bird Sanctuary, and I think it's just a really positive, positive partnership, and it'll be a great new feature when it gets built. So thank you.
Rah rah, wonderful. Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to the next one.
I would like to move resolution 2022-214, resolution approving a maintenance agreement with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District regarding the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board's obligation to maintain stormwater facilities set forth per Minnesota statutes chapters 103B and 103D for the Beday-McCasca Refectory Project within the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any light. Oh, we're seeing a light. Go for it.
Just a quick comment, President Forni. I pointed it out when we discussed this item, I was allowed to speak on the committee. This is something that we're doing that's for a specific park in a specific area. But this is actually required that we do this type of thing, a maintenance plan and all of that, system-wide, that could be an umbrella for how we manage our, the BMPs that get built on projects. So just a little, little plug, a little bee in the bonnet for everybody to think, to sort of advocate for that direction going forward. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for those insights. Not seeing, oop, go for it, Commissioner.
I have a clarifying question. Are you suggesting that we would have blanket agreements in lieu of an agreement like this moving forward?
I can, I could make the case potentially, Commissioner Musich, that an agreement might not be completely necessary because the duty to do these things already exists in the permit that this, that the park board holds with the city, you know, issued by the PCA. So just, just a thought, because this is how one watershed district does it in the city, but we have four, I think, in our area, and we don't, we have one watershed management organization. So I'm just saying that we could apply our, our responsibilities across our system, and it should meet the requirements in, in an agreement.
Okay, I think I follow that. I do know in the past, we've had some pretty serious problems with getting things maintained that other people have committed to maintaining because we did not specifically have an agreement around that particular space. So I guess I'd need to understand that concept a bit more, but I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Good insights. Thank you. Not seeing any other lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, on to the next item, Co-Chair Schaefer.
I would like to move resolution 2022-218, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board and the Minneapolis Parks Foundation, related to fundraising and other activities advancing a new community center at North Commons Park and planning activities associated with reimagining the Civic Commons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Any discussion? I don't see any discussions on this item. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me? Oh, you did say aye. Sorry. Okay. That motion carries as well. Okay, on to the next one.
I would like to move resolution 2022-225. This is a resolution approving an agreement with Green Minneapolis to collaborate on a tree planting project, the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board Planting Project 2021.
Second.
Thank you. Any, oh, Commissioner Thompson.
I would, I am, I am a big supporter of this, but I would like to move to, to postpone this in light of Commissioner Menz having COVID and being desiring to be part of this discussion. So there's my motion to postpone.
I'm not hearing a second.
Oh, second.
Second. Okay. All right. Discussion on the item? Go ahead.
I, I mean, I just, just, I'll just say, as I said, in the spirit of, obviously, we can't do this anytime someone gets sick, but I know that Commissioner Menz had written an amendment with Commissioner Elper, and I know that it was something that he probably did a lot more research on than I did. And so I just thought in the spirit of, of discussion, to postpone it one, one's board meeting. So that's all. Thank you.
I think I saw Commissioner Schaefer.
I have a question for maybe park staff. Is there any reason or downside for delaying two weeks on this vote? Is there anything that puts this behind schedule?
President Forni, Commissioner Schaefer, there is no urgency in the next couple of weeks on our, in our operation. No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Forni. I would ask that my colleagues not postpone this item. We, we have done a lot of work around this. We've discussed it in committee. We have people here tonight to support this from Green Minneapolis, as well as our own staff, that we would be telling to go home and come back again in a couple of weeks to have us have a discussion that I do not believe will change the outcome of the vote. Out of respect for the people that are here this evening, the work that's been done thus far, and the interest of not delaying something that would have the same outcome in two weeks, I would ask that we proceed with the vote this evening.
Any other lights? Sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Elper.
Thank you, President Forni. I, as I believe you all saw, I worked with Commissioner Menz on a resolution, looking, you know, in depth, I think, bringing forward really what I feel are thoughtful ideas. And I know he would like to be here to discuss both the resolutions at hand and also the one that we worked on together. And, and if there is no urgency, as staff has spoken to, I would really appreciate the opportunity to have him be part of that discussion tonight. Thank you.
Any other lights? Commissioner Olson.
Sorry. This is not so much on this specifically, but just kind of a comment. We are clearly a very engaged board that really cares and really wants to be here to represent, represent our constituencies. So I do think for our intergovernmental affairs, next time around session, I know that we are prohibited from having proxy voting or remote voting due to state law. I really think this is something that we should look at lobbying for because it's, it's becoming increasingly frustrating. And as we deal with this ongoing pandemic, you know, more of us are going to, you know, be ill or be gone and miss important votes that we really care about. So, I don't know, just a thought, and something I'll be thinking about going forward.
Thank you particularly for that comment, Commissioner Olson. You know, the unfortunate thing is, there is no guarantee that we're always going to have all members present. And I believe that there's a commissioner who is going to be gone at the next meeting. So, exactly. And, and so that's why, you know, it's very frustrating. I, I just, I feel, as Commissioner Olson said, that this is a board that does its due diligence, works hard to be informed when we come to meetings. And I also appreciate Commissioner Musich's comment. We do have members in the audience that have worked so hard for all of this and have also made themselves very, very available to all of us to inform you, to, to, to address your questions. And I'm very happy that so many of you have. David, you have been the most amazing resource. And so in light of that, I really would like you to all move forward with this. I understand when people are absent, it's, it's difficult to feel that you are present because you're not. Anyway, but I also like Commissioner Olson's thought that, is there a way to deal with these absences? Yes, excuse me, Commissioner Schaefer.
I just want to point out, I do think there's a difference between illness and COVID in particular and in particular and absences for, by choice. Particularly if Commissioner Menz has invested a significant amount of time, I understand where, why he may have that. I think we just need to honor that, that COVID is a different animal than choosing not to be here for a vacation.
Not seeing any lights. On the postponement of this item, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Should we do a roll call?
Please, yeah, thank you, President Forni. Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Musage.
No.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Abene.
No.
Vice President, excuse me, Vice President Smith.
Whoa, get it together.
It was like a couple extra rolls and...
Yeah, that's okay, I forgive you. No. Aye.
Thank you. President Forni.
Uh, no.
You have five ayes, three nays, and one absent.
Okay, that item has been postponed. On to the next item.
Commissioner, can I also just give a quick reminder, to try to speak into the mic as much as possible? We do apologize for the sound.
We on to the next agenda item? Commissioner, Co-Chair Schaefer, I believe?
Where are we here?
Resolution 2022-225.
Do we need to delay this one as well?
Oh, excuse me, this is 24, sorry. We can't do this without the other one. We still have to vote on it?
Point of order, without the other item, we're unable to move forward with this item, so we should postpone them both.
I believe we need a motion at least to postpone it.
Yes, you would, ma'am, sure. You postpone the item, can be for Resolution 2022-225, but you'd need a separate motion. If you, it matters still before the body. I think Commissioner Musage is right. It doesn't, wouldn't make a lot of sense to pass one and not the other, but...
Do we have to move it first and then move to postpone?
Yes. The correct motion would be for the chair of the committee to move it and then a motion to postpone to a definite date would be in order.
So, Co-Chair Schaefer, you need to read the resolution.
Resolution, I'd like to move Resolution 2022-224, Resolution approving a project implementation agreement with Green Minneapolis, MPRB Planting Project 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, now on to discussion.
I would like to postpone this as well.
Is there a second for that?
In the spirit of it being connected.
We have a second for that.
And it's a motion to postpone to the next board meeting on July 20th.
Correct.
Okay, we have a light.
I just want to say, I, I, I think this is important. I'm excited that we're moving this in direction because, to me, this gives us an opportunity where, for each of us to share with our constituents our perspectives, and I think that that is honoring of why each one of us have been elected to this board. And so I just wanted to clarify that I, that is the reason why I'm supporting this decision to postpone.
Any other discussion on the item? Okay, on the postponement, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No.
Okay, that motion, I believe, carries. Okay, and so we are on to unfinished business. Resolution, Resolution 2022-233, Resolution authorizing use of State Contract Number 119803 with St. Croix Recreation Fund Playgrounds Incorporated in the amount of $259,990.94 to furnish and construct playground improvements at McCray Park pending approval by the City of Minneapolis Procurement Division and further authorizing administrative use of a 5% construction contingency up to $12,999.60 for necessary construction change orders that may arise with the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. Commissioner Alper.
Thank you, President Forni. I'm just curious, just an agenda question, how this playground resolution got put under unfinished business versus on the, you know, other playground equipment that we tend to see on the consent agenda? I'm just, just, it's not a big deal, I'm just curious. Thanks.
Chair Forni, Commissioner Alper, we're fighting over who can say answer. This was unusual because we had to approve the playground concept plan first, which you did just a few minutes ago, otherwise it would have been on consent. So we needed to put things in proper sequence.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Not seeing any other lights. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. We then are on to petitions and communications, and I'm not sure again which end I started, but I'm gonna go for Commissioner Thompson, and I'm gonna just ask requests of those who attend at Greater and Greener, if you have any little tidbits of wisdom you got out of that, or the fun you had, whichever way you want to go.
Thank you, President Forni. I did attend Greater and Greener, and it was really fantastic, and actually, I just have to say, he's already left the building, or left the room, but I was in, sitting on the street in Philadelphia and ran into Coach Tate with President Forni and Commissioner Schaefer, so that was kind of fun. I, yeah, it was a phenomenal time in Philadelphia. I really had a great time with everybody there. I will echo also what Coach said in his, in his time, open time. It is, it's, it's hard to see the communication around Hall Park and Farview be delayed, and I'll try to work around and connect with people in District 2 about what that means and all the feelings around it, but I recognize this is one of the things that happens in our current market situation with inflation, so. Yeah, that's it, great time, great, great, great time at Greater and Greener, and thank you to everyone who was there. That's it for District 2.
Commissioner Schaefer? Oh, you don't have, you don't have to put your light on, but go ahead.
It's the microphone now, right? I just want to say two things. Number one, that the Kennelworth Channel will be closed Monday through Friday for repairs, actually demoing of the pedestrian bridge that's right there, and removing the structures that are supporting the new concrete bridges right there. Greater and Greener, I had a fantastic experience, really enjoyed that, and do you want us to stick to Greater and Greener, President Forni?
Oh, if you wish, you can, whatever you want to say.
I, I feel like I have crossed a threshold when I hear of tragic situations in our parks, when I've moved from a citizen to a commissioner. And I just want to publicly acknowledge that because it feels different to me, and it feels like a greater burden has been placed on my spirit, and so I want to acknowledge that, and I, none of us have answers, but I just want to read a short stanza of a poem that just came barreling down on me when I saw the picture that was taken down in the strip article of the fire and the silhouettes in the fire, and I think it all hit a lot closer home to us after all we've experienced the last two years. And I'm just gonna read this simple first stanza. "Turning and turning in the wild widening gyre, the falcon cannot hear the falconer. Things fall apart, the center cannot hold. Mere anarchy is loosed upon the world. The blood dimmed tide is loosed, and everywhere the ceremony of innocence is drowned. The best lack all conviction, while the worst are full of passionate intensity. Surely, some revelation is at hand." By William Butler Yeats. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson, go for it.
Yes.
Commissioner Musage.
Thank you, President Forni. I also attended Greater and Greener, and I think one of the biggest takeaways for me was just seeing how quickly things get out of hand when nature decides that the use for land that we have decided it's going to have is no longer sustainable. One of the parks that I toured was FDR Park in South Philly, and there's a golf course there that had to close because it became completely impossible to maintain due to rising groundwater from the ocean and the salting of all of their greens. It just, it no longer made financial sense, and they shut it down, and they just did nothing. And the doing nothing resulted in a space that, yes, people really value because it's green space in a space that, in a neighborhood that does not have a lot of green space, but most of the plants are phragmites and other intensely invasive plants that can really only be controlled through mass eradication via herbicide, and I felt like I was seeing what could happen if we choose to do nothing at Hiawatha. I really did. So I'm hopeful that this board can bring that master plan back for consideration in the near future, that we can start taking positive steps towards our coming climate future in a way that allows us to modify that land so that it can be successful and a valuable contributor to our city's ecosystem before Mother Nature makes that choice for us and invasives take the space over. So, yeah, lots to learn about, about the way that people are managing water there. They're doing a ton of work with green infrastructure, connecting up their stormwater systems to above-ground green space. It was really innovative and beautiful to see. It was also, it was also really great to see, but not great for them, where things went wrong, where there were problems, where the maintenance challenges are, where the user challenges come in when you're starting to implement that type of infrastructure in a space that typically has not had that in the past. So lots of lessons learned on those tours, and I'm just so thankful to the gracious people of Philadelphia and every other park system in the country that chose to send people to this conference so that we could all learn from each other. It never ceases to amaze me just how many people have the same problems we have here in Minneapolis, and that they are also really struggling to find innovative, new solutions to those, and that these conferences are a great opportunity for us to learn from each other and to teach each other what is and is not working, so, yeah, it was cool. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Commissioner Alper.
Thank you, President Forni. Well, I did not go to the conference, but stayed here at home, and I'm happy to, I wanted to share that I took my family to Jim Lupien Water Park, and it was great, absolutely great. So glad I got to experience that, and I highly recommend it for anybody who's looking for a place to stay cool and have fun this summer. Commissioner Abene brought up that today, all the Rec Plus in the city went to see a Lynx game, and although I, the mom that I am, I sent them to summer school, so they weren't at Rec Plus and did not get to go to the Lynx game, but it sounded pretty cool. Just want to do a shout out for that. I have planned an upcoming Boulevard Tree walking tour on July 12th. Anybody's welcome. It will be with Director of Forestry Ralph Severt. We'll meet at 5:30 PM at the corner of 39th Avenue South and 26th Street East. Please attend if you'd like to learn more about Boulevard Trees and their planting, pruning, maintenance, watering, stump removal, et cetera, et cetera. And I think somebody from Excel will be there, too, so, pretty exciting. And then last but not least, I sent another newsletter, a June bonus newsletter, so do another one in July, mid-July. Welcome any contributions, as always, from District 3 residents. Thank you.
Commissioner Abene.
Thank you, President Forni. Normally, I sort of skip this one, but I guess I just wanted to comment, I also went to the Greater and Greener Conference, and there was a lot to learn there, and there were about 900 people in attendance from all over North America and maybe even some other places beyond. But, you know, I guess I would like to impart one important perspective that I have, and was such a good reminder, that Minneapolis parks really are the best in class, and I'm not saying that because I'm sitting next to the superintendent who's not actually sitting here at the moment, but it's because, it's, it certainly is attributable to the people that work hard in the park system, but it's also attributable to the model that we have and our engaged population, and also the ethos of Minneapolis, which I think is so subtle, if you, when you move here, and whenever you do, it takes a while to figure it out, but the people that have been here for a long time, I think, understand it. It's sort of like how, I think Sally Gillette talked about how, as someone who lives on Lake Harriet Parkway, she wants the cars there. She understands how that keeps it accessible, it keeps it real. So I'm not trying to make this about parkways, but, but the, the system that we have is something that is so well-positioned to be, continue to be best in class, and also to lead, of course, on equity and inclusion and all of those things that are such a top priority for, I think, all the people that were at this Urban Parks Conference. So I just really appreciated it, and thanks for letting me share that.
Vice President Smith?
All right. First thing is, I just want to acknowledge the fact that seven young people were shot in the park on the Fourth of July at Bull Mallin, and four of those young people were under 18, and all of them were way under 25, super alarming. It speaks to the current state of where we are as a city, and just also the risk and safety in parks in the city in general, and knowing kind of the intel of that, I am concerned for the safety of our staff in our north side parks because of what transpired and what may potentially transpire, and so just sending out kind of love and care to those families as those young people are not only victims, but all of the hundreds of other folks who were out there that witnessed that, that incident, it, yeah, it's really alarming to me, and so as a community, as a, as a whole, we have to figure out how we address just keeping people safe when they want to be in space and community. The other thing is, I'm super excited about this, there's a new program, or kind of, this is the third year of a program called the Deep End Challenge, which is targeting young African-American women and young women of color, teaching them how to swim under the guise that these young people also can then become trained to become lifeguards, which I think creates a ladder of leadership for the gap that we see in the workforce, in particular, that kind of entry-level field, especially with lifeguards, so super excited to support that, and I know that is coming out of North Commons, and the park director, Yvette, is supporting that, so super excited about that because I've heard a lot about it, and we have a lot of families that we are sending from South Minneapolis to North Minneapolis to participate, so really looking forward to that. And also, the community engagement, I've heard, I was overwhelmed by the amount of people who approached me at Juneteenth about the Spark Studio at Harrison and needing more information about that, so I don't know whoever the staff persons are. Community is requesting something in writing in a form of a flyer. Lots of people are not digitally connected, they had only heard about it because I talked to one lady in the park, and she spread this thing like wildfire, and I really was just asking her a bunch of questions, so if we can do that as an organization. And I think, one thing, I think Coach Tate's disappointment is one that is reflective in lots of people, in particular around the hall and the North Commons developments that are happening. People have a great deal of concern and kind of found out things kind of at the last minute or don't feel queued in when they feel that they've invested a ton of work of their own personal capital. How do we do a better job at ensuring that our friends don't feel like they're getting blindsided by us? That's one thing. And two, how are we gonna reassure the community that North Commons isn't gonna turn into a place that is not accessible for them once we are done with this beautification of this space? of this space? So I need to publicly say that because I keep hearing it time and time again. And then, community partnerships continue to be a point of contention that I'm hearing about from folks in community. I'm way too accessible, so this is part of why I hear these things, because you can find me any Saturday and any Tuesday on the corner of Lake of Hiawatha, and most people know I'm there, so I get to do double duty. But if we can figure out a way to work in partnership with community better and be more transparent about the processes for bringing resources to our park and working in partnership with park directors, and also if community can get a heads up when their favorite park directors are being pulled. I have no idea what happened, but I know I got seven angry phone calls today regarding Matt at Peavy Park because folks didn't know he was leaving, and today they found out he was gone. So I don't know what the skinny is about that, but I figure I put it out there. But I'm excited to see us really try to transform this summer. We still have a lot of summer left, and so I think that our parks can really still have a great impact, and that is my expectation, and I'm willing to support and put my feet on the ground, not really put my hands in the dirt, but I will hold a dustpan. I'm not a fan of getting dirty, so that's that.
I'm going to take presidential exercise here. We have a 6:30 time certain, but I would like to close out the full board, meaning if that's okay with everyone. So I'm going to do my report. Greater and Greener, as already has been indicated, is so phenomenal because it is an urban, and only urban, parks, and I just, it's so unique, you know, and so I appreciate it. So they have this little note portion in the app that we use, and I went through it, and so we reminded of a few things. First of all, they refer to their CACs, which I've always hated that word, as CABs, which is the Community Advisory Board. Anyway, I just, if anybody would like to change it somehow, I don't know why, it's always bugged me. So, a couple of tidbits that I would like people to think about is that the most loss of trees is in residential lots. I'm not sure if that's true, you know, but anyway, so the majority of our canopy is lost on private lands. Whether that's applicable here, I'm not positive, but it's something for us to keep in mind, you know? How can we grow our canopy, not just in our parklands? I love this statement, audacious and joyful playmaking. We had some really good speakers, really good speakers. But probably what I thought one of the best ones was the fact that the mayor reported into the fact that they have enacted a sugary and diet beverage tax for parks. Point, I think I'm going to get this right, .015 cents a bottle that goes to parks, that they were able to get that passed. So I, something more for us to be able to research. Anyway, I had a great time, of course, you know, I got to skull, I got to see the house, the boathouses, and probably the best was cruising with the commish, which was segueing up to see Rocky. Anyway, I just also want to acknowledge that we have various, shall we say, milestones that happen through time. And two that struck me in the past, I think this month, is Title IX passed 50 years ago. Another one is that Frederick Olmsted, who's had a great deal of influence on our park systems, 200th birthday. So to me, Title IX really missed me, I guess, is the thing. And I think I'm the only one on this day, yes, okay, that was impacted by not having that access and everything, and how important it is that sex-based discrimination is not allowed, particularly in the times that is happening right now. We're losing our rights, people. And so I would like everybody to look at these milestones as an opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to these rights and reaffirm to the glory of what Frederick Olmsted did for our park systems throughout the world. Anyway, on that, I will then declare that the meeting, board meeting is adjourned, and turn it over to Co-Chair Bennie.
Thank you, President Forney. I'd like to call the Planning Committee to order. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Vice President Smith. Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Co-Chair Alper.
Here.
Co-Chair Bennie.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would somebody move the agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you. I believe we don't need a second, so all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. We don't have any minutes. So we do have a time certain item at 6:30, however, no one has, it's a, it's a public hearing, so I think I will still open the public hearing and close it even though we don't, okay. So, and then we'll move to the items associated with it. We'll just go in order here. So I'd like to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the concept plan for Sibley Park improvements. We do have a staff person here to speak on this tonight, Bianca Paz. So I'd like to see a presentation. Secretary Ringold.
Thank you, Commissioner, or Co-Chair Bennie. I just wanted to refresh kind of where we were at with this one. So this one was one that we actually held over from the previous board meeting because we were worried about the notification. So I believe the presentation already occurred at the last meeting and wouldn't need to occur again unless commissioners, of course, have questions or would request it. And if not, then you can move on to the actual action.
That sounds good. I remember now. Thank you. So, and as I said, there was a public hearing tonight, but there's no one here to speak, and no one in the room, I believe, that would like to speak, so I'd like to close the public hearing. And next, I'd like to move to action items. So could I ask a member of the committee to read Item 5.1, a resolution, as it appears on the agenda?
Moving Resolution 2022-220, Resolution Approving Sibley Park Improvement Concept Plan.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Just wanted to say I did look at the presentation, even though I wasn't here during the last meeting, and so did my due diligence, and we'll be voting for it.
The magic of YouTube.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions or any discussion? Well, with that, then I think let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. And with that, the Planning Committee is adjourned. I think I'm next. Does that sound right, President Forney?
Yep.
On behalf, okay, since we went a little out of order, I just wanted to make sure. On behalf of the Operations and Environment Committee, the time being 6:37, I'll call us to order. Secretary Ringold, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Alper.
Here.
Commissioner Bennie.
Here.
Co-Chair Thompson.
Olson, here.
I'm so sorry, Co-Chair Olson.
The T-H-O-M is in there, so it makes sense.
Could I please get?
Co-Chair Musich.
President.
Thank you.
I have a quorum.
You do have a quorum.
Lovely. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda for this evening.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve those from June 1st of 2022.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. This evening, we have a study report item on the mosquito, Metropolitan Mosquito Control Services. This is Superintendent Barrick. If you'd like to do the introductions, that would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Musich, and Commissioners. I'll be very brief because I'm going to introduce James Schaefer and Alex Carlson. James Schaefer is our Natural Resource Supervisor. James came into that position about four months ago, I think, and that previously, that position was Marshall Holmberg, who retired last August. And so James is going to give us a quick, brief overview of how the Park Board interfaces with the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District, and then we'll turn it over to Alex, who will go over the MMCD program. And this is in response to the number of inquiries we've had around mosquito control at Roberts Bird Sanctuary and in some of the other park properties. So we hope to answer a lot of questions tonight, and we'll, Alex will go through his presentation, and we'll, all three stand for questions after that. So I'll turn it over to James and Alex. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. James Schaefer, Natural Resource Supervisor with the Park Board. I'm kind of here because I am one of the primary contacts with Metropolitan Mosquito Control District when they're out there, so I'm a little more cued in on what they're doing. Generally, why we're here is we want to kind of, there's been a lot of questions about like what MMCD does, how they kind of assess and choose sites for treatment, what their tools are that they use for mosquito control, what the, like, off-targets effects could be of some of their treatments, and whether it's advisable to opt out of certain areas of treatment. In general, our kind of collaboration has been pretty informal. We've had some agreements, but they're nothing that have been signed. So back in 2004, within one of our integrated pest management plans, we just kind of set up an agreement with MMCD that they would notify us anytime they were doing applications on our property, as well as post-signs, so they'll kind of talk to you through that about. And then MMCD is here because they prepared a presentation giving an overview of kind of their history and their mission, kind of what their targets are, what they're trying to accomplish, what their methods are, and then also how MMCD has collaborated with and interacted with landowners such as ourselves, private landowners, and then other people within their district. So I'd like to have Alex come up.
Welcome, Alex. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you, President Forney and Commissioners, for allowing me to come talk about mosquitoes tonight. I'm going to keep this presentation brief just for the sake of time, but I do encourage you to reach out to me afterwards if you have additional questions, and I can send slides that might provide some additional information as well. But an overview of the presentation today, talk about the background of MMCD, got to talk about the mosquito life cycle and mosquito biology because it's really to understand mosquito control, it helps to understand, you know, where they develop, what their life cycle is and everything like that. Talk about our integrated pest management program, environmental precautions, and then I always like to end my presentations with mosquito control tips for the everyday person and homeowner in the Twin Cities. But to introduce myself, getting a little ahead of, I am Alex Carlson. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District, and I was assisted in this presentation by our Executive Director, Dr. Stephen Mannwiler, who's also available for questions outside of this presentation, and our entomologist, Dr. Nancy Reed. And with me also have Kyle Beadle, who is the Regional Operations Manager for our Plymouth facility, which covers Minneapolis. So we were established in 1958 by a state statute. We're governed by a board of 18 elected county commissioners, so our current chair is actually Hennepin County Commissioner Angela Conley. And it's a really good system, I think, because the voters really have a say in who oversees the operations of mosquito control. 2,900 square miles in our service area, we have over 3 million people that we serve, 70,000 wetland habitats, and you'll understand the importance about that as, as I go on. But really, we're the land of 10,000 lakes and lots of more ponds and wetlands and swamps and lots of mosquito habitats, so we really have our work cut out for us. We have 30,000 woodland habitats, and we're funded by property taxes. We're considered a special taxing district, so on property tax statements, that's where you see the funding for Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. The state statute that gives us legislative authority is 473.704. It gives us the right to access property for mosquito surveillance and control activities. Residents, individuals can request to opt out of their mosquito control activities on private property. Exceptions of these requests are made in case of vector-borne disease response. So if we find active cases of mosquito-borne disease, in that case, we can cross private property. But typically, we want, we want to work with people, we want to be considered a partner and, you know, be respectful of people. Our cities, counties, and park boards are the proprietors of their land, and we work to ensure transparency and clear communication. We put a lot of information on our website about site histories and where we go and what helps us make our decisions. So our relationship with NPRB, James did a really good outline, but basically, we formed an agreement back in 2004, but the document was never signed. So some of that includes posting signage to notify the Park Board staff prior to helicopter treatments that are going to be in the area. We have never conducted adult mosquito control on NPRB grounds, and I'll explain what that is as I go through this presentation. And then we regularly communicate with NPRB staff to address questions that may come in from the public. So mosquitoes, there's over 3,000 species of mosquitoes worldwide. Fortunately, Minnesota, our climate only has 51 that are established here in the, in our part of the country. But interestingly, only about 24, less than half of those species, are considered a public health concern, meaning they're human biting. The other half bite birds and frogs and other species that are, get their blood meal from, from other sources. To really understand mosquito control, it helps to understand the life cycle. The majority of a mosquito's life cycle is involved with standing water. And so kind of the steps of the life cycle, there's two different types of egg-laying events that mosquitoes can conduct. Some species lay their eggs on the edges of, of water, where they know that when a flood water event happens, when it rains, the water's going to flood up, and then the mosquito eggs are going to hatch. There's other species that are permanent water mosquitoes, so they lay their eggs directly onto standing water, whether that's ponds or shallow wetlands, or containers, or standing water that's man-made. There's a lot of mosquitoes that find their habitat in our garbage that we create for them. The next stage is the larva stage, so they spend their larva development in the water. They have four different stages where they're filter feeder, so they feed on bacteria, yeast, algae, other things. The larval stage usually lasts four to 14 days, usually this time of the summer when the water temperatures are warmer. It's about four to five days when they're in the water as larva. And then the final stage is the pupa, called the tumblers because they kind of tumble around. At this stage, they're no longer feeding, they're developing their adult mosquito parts. This stage lasts about one to two days. And then the adult mosquito emerges, the female is the one that bites, female seeks the blood meal to reproduce their eggs. Females can live two to three months, males typically live 15 to 30 days. So from egg hatch to adult emergence, it's typically about a week, five to seven days. So that's usually when the larva is active. I'm not going to go through every species, but some of the more common species we have, the 80s species are the ones that lay their eggs on the edges of the floodwater, and then the Culex species are the one, are the container of permanent water-breeding mosquitoes. And Culex are the species of concern when it comes to West Nile virus in Minnesota. So this is a species that lays their eggs in standing water, existing permanent water sources, whether it be shallow wetlands, or, like I said, containers, catch basins in the side of roads, waste tires, lots of sources that are created for standing water. So one of our big educational campaigns is just dump out the water. If you see any water on your property or nearby, eliminate it, and you can help with the public health initiatives. I got to include this slide. I do a lot of presentations at elementary schools and talk about mosquito math, so this is just kind of a fun slide that I always throw in. But let's look at some, now that you know kind of the life cycle and how everything works, let's look at the possibilities when it comes to mosquito reproduction. So you have the mama mosquito right there, she gets her blood meal, she lays an egg event. Most egg-laying events are about 300 eggs, half of those are females, so 150 females. Second generation comes along, got 150 females plus the mom, 151 egg rafts times 300 more, 45,300 mosquitoes, half of those are females. Third generation comes along, you see where this is going, 22,650 females times another 300, 6 million mosquitoes, half of those are females. And the fourth generation comes along, we're up to 1.3 billion mosquitoes, all in one month from one female mosquito. Now, obviously, not every egg is going to hatch, not every mosquito is going to survive, but just goes to show how quickly mosquitoes can really overwhelm an environment if they're given the right conditions and the right habitat. Interesting fact about mosquito eggs is mosquito eggs can actually survive unhatched for up to seven years. So when we do have kind of a low mosquito year, doesn't necessarily mean that they're we're out of the woods. I mean, the mosquito's eggs are still present, waiting for that next big rain event so they can hatch and then come out the next year. So just here's some images of mosquito habitat, permanent water sources, you know, floodplains, shallow areas on the edges of lakes and rivers. The lakes themselves are not going to produce mosquitoes. It's too deep, the water's too disturbed, they need shallow standing water. But it'll be more on the edges where they're kind of protected. Floodwater, that's kind of our most common mosquito, is the floodwater mosquito. They develop on areas that are designed to flood up when the rain comes, that's when they hatch, and then they emerge about a week later. So we're really busy after a rainfall, that's our, kind of our busiest time. And then containers, we create a lot of mosquito habitat with our garbage, waste tires, buckets. We do a lot of work with catch basins. We have crews that go around Minneapolis and St. Paul and treat the storm drains, which have, hold standing water that gets murky all summer long. And then we encourage people to reduce water on their property as well. So mosquito-borne disease is really the modus operandi for mosquito control. Really, our main charge is to reduce mosquito-borne disease in our service area. Mosquitoes are actually the deadliest creature on earth. They kill more human beings than any other species. Mainly, it's through diseases like malaria, yellow fever. Mainly, it's through diseases like malaria, yellow fever, Zika, and dengue, which are the most common worldwide mosquito borne diseases. Here in Minnesota, we have West Nile virus, Jamestown Canyon virus, Eastern equine encephalitis and Western equine encephalitis, triple E or WEE, lacrosse encephalitis and dog heartworm. I'm not going to go through all of these in great detail. There's lots of good information on our website. I also like to recommend this book, The Mosquito: A Human History of Our Deadliest Predator. It's not just for mosquito nerds like me. It's also anybody who's interested in history. He looks through some major conflicts throughout history and looks at the role mosquitoes have played. It's kind of fascinating if you're a history buff. But West Nile virus is the most common mosquito borne disease in Minnesota. It was introduced in 2002, and there's been human cases every year except for 2020, and I'll talk on that in just a second. But basically, how West Nile virus is spread is birds are the vertebrate host. So mosquitoes that feed on birds will carry the disease, and the disease will spread among bird populations. And then when that mosquito that feeds on a bird also feeds on a person, that's when the disease is transmitted to humans or to horses. Humans and horses are considered dead-end hosts. If I get West Nile virus, I can't spread it to somebody else. It has to be spread through an infected mosquito. But there's a high mortality rate in corvids. So usually, the life cycle of West Nile virus is we're collecting mosquitoes and testing them at MMCD. And usually, around the time we find our first positive sample for West Nile virus is when we start getting reports from the public of a dead raven or a dead crow, because we do ask people to report those because that's usually a sign that West Nile activity might be in an area. Seeing some birds that don't have any other trauma, that some sort of disease appears to be killing them. So usually, we get the reports of dead birds. We used to go collect every dead bird and then test them. We don't do that anymore because we have more sophisticated ways to test mosquitoes in an area. And then that's usually a couple weeks or months later is when we find out about the first human cases. So there's a little bit of a delay. So we're really able to be proactive when we find those positive cases of mosquito borne disease in an area in the mosquito populations. We're able to try to be proactive and respond before it gets to the human population. And I just put this note at the bottom that I just added because we just found our first positive West Nile virus mosquito pool in Hennepin County from a gravit trap in Minneapolis on June 22nd. So it's a hot year, hot, dry years are typically high years for West Nile virus. And again, the Culex is the vector species for that. So this is the CDC maps of West Nile virus. I just threw these on there. 2018 was the last year that the disease was in extremely high numbers, but 2021, there was cases in several counties in the Twin Cities, several cases found in Hennepin County. And what's interesting is 2021 was notable because it was a low year for mosquitoes in general. There wasn't a lot of high mosquito annoyance populations. But there was higher disease activity in 2021 than there was in 2020. And 2020 was a typically average year for mosquito populations. And so it just shows that the types of mosquitoes that can carry disease and can vector disease aren't as impacted by a drought as annoyance mosquitoes or nuisance mosquitoes. And so people were less likely to take precautions, probably. They weren't necessarily getting bitten up in the evening, so they weren't putting on bug spray or wearing those long sleeves and stuff like that. So it's always important that the people are diligent, even when it doesn't seem like there's a lot of mosquitoes out. All it takes is the one disease-carrying mosquito to cause a major illness. Some of the other diseases that we're aware of and monitoring and doing our best to stay on top of are Jamestown Canyon virus. It's found in a spring mosquito species. It usually comes towards the beginning of the summer. Lacrosse encephalitis is, we have a program that really does a lot of jobs, a lot of work trying to remove risks for lacrosse encephalitis, but this is a disease spread by container breeding 80s mosquitoes. They love to breed in waste tires and tree holes, so we do a lot of surveillance, try to find where these mosquitoes are and then remove their breeding habitat. So we recycle waste tires, we fill tree holes, we try to reduce any habitat that can hold 80s mosquitoes. Eastern equine encephalitis is kind of one of the new diseases in the area that we're really concerned about, mainly because it has an extremely high mortality rate, 30% in humans and 90% in horses. There's been no human cases in Minnesota, but in 2021, there were two cases in horses that were killed by eastern equine encephalitis. They weren't in the district, they weren't in the Twin Cities, they were in northern Minnesota, but there were also human cases in western Wisconsin, just across our border. So we know of the species that vectors this disease, so when we do our surveillance, we're trying to find if the species is migrating and becoming more populous in the Twin Cities. And then dog heartworm is another one transmitted by summer floodwater mosquitoes. So in order to make our control decisions, we use integrated pest management. So we have not only an overarching integrated pest management, but we have an individual integrated pest management plan for every single species that we encounter. And so we have an entomology lab in St. Paul that really kind of runs our main surveillance operations and identifying the species, and then we have excellent field staff out there that are collecting mosquitoes and doing kind of the control operations. And every year, our operations and our budget and everything is reviewed by a technical advisory board. So this is made up of members of the University of Minnesota, state agencies like the Department of Health, DNR, Department of Transportation, as well as federal agencies like the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Environmental Protection Agency. So they come and they review extensive report that our technical services team puts together. It's published on our website. It's really interesting if you're into statistics and everything like that, but it's kind of what determines our operations. And they also will recommend if we want to do some additional studies or anything like that. That usually comes from our technical advisory board. So it starts with surveillance. The first thing that we're doing is doing surveillance in the community. Usually, when people see us out in wetlands, we're doing surveillance. So we're putting on the waders, getting into the ponds, and using dippers and other methods to collect mosquito larvae, putting in a sample vial and sending it back to our lab so they can identify it by species. We target the species that are most likely to spread disease, and we do not target species that don't bite humans. So if we find a high number of mosquito larvae that we know is a bird-feeding only species or a species that's not going to be harmful to humans, we won't do a treatment. So our treatments are targeted on areas where we know that there's a high number of mosquito larvae that will bite humans and could potentially spread disease. We also do adult mosquito surveillance. We set up CO2 traps, which that's in the image there, every Monday night throughout the summer. We also have a sweep net collection, which I get to be a big dork and go stand in my front yard every Monday night with a sweep net and wait for the mosquitoes to come by me, and then I sweep around for about two minutes and bring that sample back to the lab, and they can tell me what mosquitoes are in my part of the Twin Cities. And we have a whole network of volunteers that do that every Monday night. And then we set about 200 traps up around the Twin Cities. And we publish these on our website. So in any given week, you can go to our website and get a glimpse of what the mosquito situation is that week, where they're most populous, which cities are kind of seeing surges, and usually does follow the rain. But it's kind of interesting to see, you know, when things come and go. Once the surveillance data is collected, we send it to our lab in St. Paul, who does the identifying work. So they identify both the larval and the adult mosquito samples, identify them by species. Larval samples are identified to determine if there are species that merits treatment. Adult samples are taken to our vector ecologist, Kirk Johnson, who can test them if they are carrying West Nile virus. So we have a ramp test method we can do right in our lab to determine if those mosquitoes are actively carrying West Nile virus. Some species are tested for disease at MMCD. Some species are sent out to different universities that we partner with to test for certain diseases that we don't have the technology to test for. And then this is what our maps look like. So the map on the right is 2020, which is a typical mosquito year, mid-July. Map last year was mid-July 2021, so big difference last year because of the dry year that we had. But every year or every week, we kind of have a snapshot of what the mosquito situation looks like. So once those first steps are done, that's when we move on to determining our control. So there's three primary methods that we can control mosquitoes, larval control, adult control, and then reducing breeding habitat, which is source reduction. The table on the right there kind of shows, we really consider ourselves to be a larval control agency. Our main priority is to control mosquitoes in the larval stage. And there's a couple of reasons for this. First of all, larval control materials are the safest materials that they make. They're specifically targeted to only impact mosquito larvae with minimal impacts to non-target species, and so we really think that's an important part of our IPM plan. Second, it's easier to target larvae when they're concentrated in a breeding site versus adult mosquitoes, which can fly up to 20 miles, so it's hard to, you know, find out where the adult mosquitoes are. And then we also have a geographical advantage. We do get a lot of comments and calls from other mosquito control agencies on, you know, why larval control is such a big part of our organization, whereas other parts of the country, they do a lot more adult mosquito control. We have the advantage because we have such a wide service area, so we can do a lot of larval control, and it's going to impact the widest amount of citizens versus, you know, if we were just one city kind of surrounded by country, we could do larval control, but mosquitoes don't understand borders. They're going to fly across from neighboring cities where there isn't larval control. So that's why other areas have to focus on adult control more. But really, larval control reduces the need for adult mosquito control. Being proactive and targeting specific species at the larval stage really helps us be effective. Source reduction is kind of the easiest method. We do alley inspections, we do neighborhood inspections. We'll try to find, you know, sources of standing water and encourage people to remove them. We do free tire recycling, so anybody who lives in the Seven County metro who has tires, we will come and pick them up for free and recycle them. Tires are very good breeding habitat for mosquitoes. We want them to be removed. And then we do a lot of just public education, encouraging people to dump water out. And then larval control. So larval control materials are dry granules. They look like the picture there where they're little pellets, and they're applied via helicopter, backpack, or hand spreader. They're specifically targeted to control mosquito larvae, and they're not toxic to any other species. The primary active ingredients that we use are BTI, it's a fun one to pronounce, Bacillus thuringiensis. It was a bacteria discovered in Israel. Basically, there's two ponds, one of them had a lot of mosquito larvae, one of them didn't, and they tried to figure out why, and they found a bacteria in the pond, and they replicated that, and that's used worldwide. It's one of the most common mosquito control products used. It's been widely tested for safety. Methoprine is an insect growth inhibitor, so basically, it mimics a hormone in mosquitoes so that they never get to the adult stage. So it actually doesn't kill the mosquito larvae, it just stops their growth. And then spinosid is a similar soil bacterium to BTI. We use it in a formulation called Natular, which is specifically targeted for mosquito larvae. And then you see some images of applications there. Adult control, mainly the adult control that we do is in response to active disease cases. So if there's a high number of diseased mosquitoes found and there's a high population area, that's when we'll respond with adult control. Most people, when they think of mosquito control, they think of the trucks driving down the road with the fog behind them, but that hasn't been the case in decades. Now, it's a lot more targeted. When we do treatments, we do barrier treatments. So we'll find an area where, we call it a harborage, where mosquitoes go and they rest out during the day out of the direct sunlight, and then we'll spray the barrier. This is a lot more effective because, one, it helps us target only areas where we know are likely to hold mosquitoes, and it helps us train our staff to avoid flowering plants, flowering weeds, you know, anything that could potentially harbor pollinators to be as safe as possible. We do sometimes do an ATV cold fog, but that's really, we haven't done one of those in a few years. And then it's very small amounts used, so we can calibrate to make sure that there's proper dosage. We've never done an aerial application of adulticides. That's just not something we'll ever plan to do in Minnesota, at least from our program. We take environmental protection seriously, and so we take a lot of different steps to ensure environmental safety. So all of our staff are trained by the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. We renew their licenses every two years. We do annual training and reminders on pollinator safety, identifying milkweed, identifying pollinator habitat, and following material labels. We collaborate with groups like the Minnesota Hobby Beekeepers and Monarch Joint Venture to make sure that we're learning from them, we communicate with each other to make sure that we're exchanging best practices, and they give us some good information as well on how we can do our job safely and effectively. And then this is what Stephen, our executive director, always likes to say. He said, "The district uses the lowest effective treatment dosage of the least toxic effective control materials available for both larval and adult mosquito control." And we're continually assessing and reassessing our practices. We've done a myriad of studies over the years, and they're all published on our website, and I wanted to share some highlights from a couple of them. Usually, our technical advisory board will say, "We want you to take a look at this area." Usually, it's disease-related, so we want to learn more about Jamestown Canyon virus is one of the more recent ones, but sometimes it's about, you know, pollinator habitat or non-target risks. And the biggest study we did was in the 1990s, we did a non-target impact study. So a scientific peer review panel was created, mainly with University of Minnesota Duluth, partially University of Minnesota Twin Cities as well, but just examine the long-term impacts of BTI and methoprine on birds, frogs, and non-target insect species. So that's the larval control materials they use. So basically, they went to Wright County, found 27 sites. It's a county we've never done service in before. It's outside of our service area. Found 27 sites that were treated six times per year with larval control materials, and we were determining what are the direct effects on aquatic insects, zooplankton, and frogs, and what are the indirect effects on the food web, on other animals in the area. So the study was repeated year over, every year over the, it ended up being a 10-year period, and found that the treated sites saw 70% to 90% reduction in mosquito larvae present. So the materials were effective in their main objective in reducing mosquito larvae. But we also found amphibian growth and survival is not affected by methoprine even when doses were higher than normal. There's no significant differences in macroinvertebrates or zooplankton untreated versus untreated sections of ponds. Bird censuses showed no difference in breeding bird populations, even in the years when the insect populations were lower because of changing, you know, environmental conditions, drier years and wetter years and stuff like that. So this full study is published on our website. It's extremely detailed. Dr. Nancy Reed was the spearhead of the presentation of it, so she's been a good resource. Talk a little bit about bees, but we work with the Department of Agriculture and Drift Watch, so anybody who's got a hive can register their hive on Drift Watch. That's how we find out about it, as well as private, any private pesticide applicator has to consult Drift Watch. Anytime that they would use a bee-lethal material or they could face penalty from the Department of Agriculture. We work with the Monarch Joint Venture to learn about monarch flight patterns, and then we also did a milkweed study, is one of the other studies that we did, to assess spatial distribution of milkweed in the Seven County area and potentially overlapping with our adult mosquito control treatments. And we did a swath study as well to see if we have to do a treatment, there's going to be a little bit of, you know, spray that gets out of its targeted area, what's the risk of it? How far do we have to be from milkweed to make sure it doesn't get onto the milkweed? So that really helped us, you know, with our materials and with our operations. We publish maps on our website. This is a great resource for the public. You can go to our website, click District Maps, type in any address in the Twin Cities, and you can zoom in to see what work we've done in that area. Like I mentioned, we have 70,000 wetlands that we're monitoring. You probably have one right in your neighborhood that you may not even be aware of, like cities design flood areas that hold water when it rains and stuff like that. So we're aware of a lot of these. And lakes and bigger bodies of water aren't where we're going to find mosquito larvae. It's the smaller, shallower areas of the water. And you can click on each area and find out when we were last there, if any treatment was done, what mosquitoes were found, what species were found, and stuff like that. So it's a good resource for people just to kind of know more about what we're doing. And we rank sites, I have that at the bottom, but we rank every site based on historical data. So we know we've got 50 years of data, and we know which sites are more likely to produce mosquitoes and which sites are less. So if we have, you know, a weekend where we get two inches of rain, and we know that there's a big mosquito hatch happening, we can kind of prioritize the top sites that are most likely to be holding mosquito larvae. People can sign up for email alerts to find out about adult mosquito control activity. We post helicopter notifications online and on our website. We do a lot of public education. It's an important part of our IPM program. Everybody from top down at MMCD is involved in public education, whether it's, you know, talking at schools, attending parades, attending community events, you know, posting on social media, everything like that. So if you know of any groups that we should connect with, we like to talk to every type of group, let us know, or if you know any events that we should attend, we'd love to attend events as well. We can bring our giant inflatable mosquito or our mosquito mascot. Her name is Victoria. She makes a lot of public appearances in the summer. And then I wanted to also conclude with some more specific questions because we've been working with James and with other NPRB staff, and some specific questions have arisen regarding the Roberts Bird Sanctuary. There are several wetland areas within and nearby the sanctuary that have a history of high mosquito larvae counts. The area is also highly trafficked. West Nile vectors have been found within these sites, and overall larval control methods that we do reduce the need for adult mosquito control to respond to disease activity. to respond to disease activity. So it's part of our being proactive. There's no currently existing MPRB areas with written larval control prohibition. So we're going to sit and we're going to talk with James and Jeremy and come up with some best practices, but we also, we want to ensure that, you know, we're communicative, we're flexible, we're open, we're transparent, and we want to, you know, do what's best for everybody. My quick tips to protect yourself. So to avoid mosquitoes, use an EPA-registered insect repellent, long sleeves, loose-fitting, light-colored clothing. A good tip I love for people who are going to be, you know, camping or out where it's kind of in the deeper woods, a permethrin-based repellent for your clothes and gear can not only repel mosquitoes, but also ticks as well. Spraying the ankles and shoes, it's really effective. And then avoid peak feeding times, dusk and dawn. And then to reduce mosquitoes around your home, remove containers, clear out gutters. If you have a birdbath or rainwater, rain garden, or you have a rain barrel, just make sure that the water is refreshed weekly. If it's a rain barrel, there's a screen you can get over it so that the mosquitoes can't get in to lay their eggs. If you have waste tires, or if you see any waste tires, call us. We'll come and collect them and recycle them. Keep grass short and make sure there's no holes in your screens. Put out a fan in a seating area. I found this is really effective. Mosquitoes are weak flyers, so a fan can keep them away. If you have property-specific mosquito control questions, call us. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. That was a lot of information. I'm sure my colleagues have questions. Commissioner Benny.
Thank you, Commissioner Musich. Okay, thank you so much for that presentation. I do have some questions.
Sure.
And I think the first question I have is, I would guess that there are, you know, your Seven County
Yeah.
...area program, but I would guess other urban centers around the state also do some form of mosquito control. But like in our, there must be areas of the state where we don't have any mosquito control, like maybe at some of the state parks and all of that.
Sure.
So is there, is there something about the presence of human beings in a space that cause an increase in the type of mosquito that you're actually targeting? Or is that just because the presence of people is, people don't like mosquitoes and don't like the risk associated with mosquitoes, and so that's driving the treatment? Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I mean, the higher population areas is where there's going to be the higher risk of mosquito-borne disease and mosquito encounters with mosquitoes. And so we have our priority zones. So in our Seven County metro area, we have an area where 95% of the population lives in our Priority One zone. So those are the areas that we're going to focus on. And then, you know, my Priority Two is that we get to, you know, after the fact. But there are some mosquitoes that are, that have evolved to prefer feeding on human beings. There's some mosquitoes that have evolved to prefer other species.
So, but am I at a higher risk of getting, you know, a bad mosquito bite in Minneapolis than I would be at a state park somewhere else in Minnesota?
That's a good question. I mean, in the past couple of years, Hennepin County has been one of the higher areas for mosquito-borne disease. It also is one of the higher population areas. It's the biggest population. So it's hard to say definitively that it's because of the population in Hennepin County that there's also the higher correlation with mosquito-borne disease, but it's also the type of habitat. We, where there's a lot of people, there's a lot of storm drains and containers and all these things that can create mosquito habitat as well.
Yeah. But like everything else, it seems that this is about us people, right? This isn't about the habitat or the mosquitoes. And so one of the things that wasn't in your presentation, as far as I can tell, was any mention of nuisance controls, because that is part of what you're doing as well, correct?
Yep. Yes.
And so how do you, how do you calibrate that? I think that the public health part, I think people would have a hard time arguing with that, especially when there's evidence that there's something in an area. But how do you decide whether or not there's a, you know, what level of nuisance can be tolerated, and who gets to decide that?
Yeah. That's a great question. Actually, there was a study done by MMCD in the 80s on the tolerance level for nuisance mosquitoes from an average person. And actually, one of our entomologists just sent that as a, like a fun fact email today. I'm trying to remember the exact number, but it was, like, the average person will accept two mosquito bites every five minutes. But we set thresholds, it could be, each person is different. So we do set thresholds for the types of mosquitoes that we target. Obviously, with diseased mosquitoes, the threshold is lower. With nuisance mosquitoes, the threshold is higher.
So again, though, it seems as though that the park board could decide to say that there are certain times of year or certain places where, especially at dusk, you know, you might want to have your spray on because, you know, it would be more, we might over-treat if we're only treating for that nuisance condition. And I think that's the crux of my concern.
Sure.
And then, before I go, I know I'm hogging here. Oh, so the, most of the treatments are, you know, pellet treatments. I think you did sort of speak to that a little bit, but when you do treat the catch basins, you're looking at the standing water catch basins, right?
Yes, yeah. The ones that are designed to hold
With sumps, yeah.
The catch debris, yeah. Sumps, designed to catch debris, and especially in a dry year like last year, the rain doesn't come and flush them out. And so that water just kind of sits there all summer and gets really murky.
So does that flush into the water bodies, though? And what is, and I think you said there was some aquatic evaluation of damage to aquatic life of some sort, zooplankton, I don't know, but
Yes.
Does that, what does that, what effect does that have in the, in the water bodies?
The materials that we use have a pretty quick breakdown, and so if they do get into an area where they're in the open, they're not going to, it's going to be, it's such a small dosage that it's not going to impact any.
And I'll just close by saying, you know, I'm very interested in us actually thinking about our, a little bit more, dialing it in a little bit more, I think, in places like Roberts Bird Sanctuary and some of our natural areas, where we could prioritize habitat and the other species that we share the planet with, because it is always about us, and maybe in some cases, we don't, we don't need to be that guy. You know what I mean? So thank you so much. I'll close my comments.
Anyone else? While people are thinking, then, I have a few questions.
Sure.
When you're doing your analysis around where you're going to treat and when, do you try to identify spaces outside of designated sanctuary, park spaces to treat rather than treating within those spaces as part of your decision-making process? Or could you step us through perhaps how you come to decide where you're going to treat within the Minneapolis
Sure, yeah. I mean, we go where the water is, and where the water is, is where the mosquitoes go. So we, we're familiar with pretty much every holding water area within the Twin Cities over our history. And so we prioritize sites based on what they're likely to hold. So if they're likely to hold West Nile virus-carrying mosquitoes, Culex mosquitoes, those will have a higher priority than a site that won't. And so that's kind of, we, there are, you know, natural areas that we, that we'll try to avoid if we can, but if there's a lot of mosquito larvae in that area and they're potentially the disease-carrying mosquito larvae, we try to target those areas.
Okay, so the decision matrix you're utilizing prioritizes preventing disease.
Yes.
And when disease vectors become present, you're going to treat that, no matter what type of site that is?
For disease vectors, yes. Well, and then we also have our thresholds for nuisance mosquitoes as well.
Okay. And in areas like Eloise Butler Wildflower Garden, for example, or the Roberts Bird Sanctuary, are you doing nuisance treatments, or are you primarily doing disease vector
Well, for Eloise Butler, we, there actually isn't sites in Eloise Butler that produce mosquitoes. So we don't, we haven't been in there in quite a while. We will occasionally go in and check to see if there's any holding water, but the reason that we don't do treatments there is because there just isn't good mosquito habitat there. In Roberts Bird Sanctuary, it's permanent water. So it's water that Culex mosquitoes could find and lay their eggs in. And so it's, it's hard because we can't be at every site all the time, and so some permanent water mosquitoes could be coming anytime. And so we try to, you know, be proactive in areas that we know have produced Culex mosquitoes in the past.
Okay. So around Eloise Butler, there are wetlands, those are being treated?
Around, yeah. In, most of our, yeah, most of our treatments are in wetlands around, you know, in and around parks where water is standing often.
Okay. And I noticed you've started to treat the volunteer wet spaces that we did not officially define as marshes or wetlands around Lakes Nacomas and Hiawatha. I would assume that that's because you're using visual assessment to determine where standing water occurs rather than where people have reported water to be in the past? Is that
It's a little bit of both. I mean, people can report standing water to us, and we'll go investigate. We work a lot with cities if they're doing development projects, and so they'll tell us where, you know, areas are being developed that might hold standing water or being changed. But yeah, then a lot of our, a lot of our time is also just spent, you know, driving around, looking at neighborhoods, doing alley inspections, finding out if there's areas that are holding water.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Are there any additional questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Schaffer.
I just want to clarify. So you do only, so neighborhood parks that have no water features, you are not spraying?
No, our main focus is larval control. So the only time we would go to a neighborhood park that doesn't have any water is if one of our traps collected mosquitoes that were tested to be found carrying West Nile virus. And so then we might come and respond to it with an adult mosquito control treatment.
Okay. And then you mentioned that 2020 did not have any West Nile cases. What were the cases in Minnesota for 2021 and 2022?
There was six cases in the district, and they were split between, I think, five were in Hennepin County and one was in Carver County.
And are these animals or people or both?
Yep, these are human cases.
Okay. All right.
And 2020 was, obviously, it was a pandemic year, so it's hard to know if people had West Nile and they just didn't seek treatment. One of the big ways that it's detected is through blood donations. So people, they think they have the flu, and they don't get medical treatment, and then they donate blood a month later, and that's when the disease is found. It's particularly dangerous for older adults, so especially people over the age of 50 is when the disease can become deadly.
Thank you. Commissioner Alper.
Thank you, Co-Chair Musich. I was just curious about that, I think it was the first slide that you had about the, that we had, we had, were working on an agreement, but it needed review, or something like that. Do you mind, maybe you could flip back to it or talk more about that?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if Jeremy or James want to mention that too, but basically, when we've been talking with park staff, we were looking at what type of agreement we'd had, and the only thing we could find was from 2004, and it had never been signed by any party from what we could tell. And so that's why we're going to sit down and, you know, bring interested parties involved and try to, you know, come up with a formal agreement that we can, I'm not sure if we're going to present it to the board, or we're kind of in the beginning stages of that, but we know that something, you know, needs to be investigated and discussed.
Okay. Okay, so it'll, you're working on it.
Co-Chair Musich, Commissioner Alper. Yeah, it was an agreement we weren't aware of. James actually found it. So in his research and taking over, he discovered there was this 2004 agreement that kind of laid out some best management practices around adult control when we were doing fogging. And so in conversations that we've had, like even the measure that we took this year with MMCD notifying of the helicopter activity onsite in advance, that was just something that came up with last season's conversations. Hey, this could help. So we started doing that this year. So I think going back, looking at similar things in that agreement and outlining a new agreement going forward that addresses the concern would be where we're headed.
Great. Will this also include larval control, then?
Yeah, this would focus on kind of the current practice. In 2004, they were looking at adult control. 2022, we're looking at larval control and current knowledge of what we know.
Commissioner Benny for the second time.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Musich. Just back to Roberts Bird Sanctuary, because it's actually in my district, and it's just such an unusual place that does have standing water. So this is maybe way too specific a question, but do you know if there are any sweep net volunteers in Roberts Bird Sanctuary?
I don't believe that there are.
So I think it sounds like maybe Monday nights could be the night to go down there and swing the net.
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful. I think it would be, I think one of the things that, you know, we have friends of Roberts Bird Sanctuary and others that are very engaged with thinking about this and have a lot of concern for, I think it's called the food web, and other implications and, you know, unintended consequences. So I think, is there a way, and maybe it's a question for Jeremy too, but if we could study the mosquito population in Roberts Bird Sanctuary and try to dial it in just more than we do now, and what would you need from us to do that?
Yeah, I think that that's a great idea, and finding additional, I mean, our lab loves to do research on new projects, and so I, we get them involved in this as well. And another important thing is mosquitoes do fly a fair distance. So I think collecting mosquitoes in Roberts Birds would be good, but it's also the neighborhoods that surround that area that are going to see the mosquitoes that are coming from that area. Mosquitoes can fly up to 20 miles. So it's really the communities that are surrounded that can see those mosquitoes coming out of there as well, so.
Thank you.
If there are a chance, could you put the audience to answer a couple of questions?
No, I'm not entertaining questions from the audience. Commissioner Schaffer for the second
Yeah, I had a question. If you had offhand the percentage of Hennepin County residents that opt out of your treatments, if you happen to know what that is, and if you ever do community engagement around your processes within Hennepin County?
Oh, yes. We do lots of, I don't have the number offhand on individuals that have opted out. Most of the opt-outs are beehives for people who are holding beehives, and they don't want adult control, and they'll still be open to larval control. And then the other opt-outs are just people who have private property concerns, and they don't want anybody on their private property. So I don't have, but I don't have an exact number of percentage of people that have opted out. I wouldn't say it's significant. Usually, once, usually, once I talk to people on the phone and you, we kind of explain, you know, what we're doing, they understand that we're, what our goals are and the safety precautions that we take.
Okay.
And then outreach in Hennepin County is consistent. We do a lot of public events and presentations and visiting, I've visited with city councils and individual city environmental groups, talking to any type of interested parties. I've spoken to neighborhood groups, trying to, trying to get the word out, because public education is such an important part of the mosquito control initiative, and getting, getting people to understand, you know, what goes into mosquito control.
Well, I think we, as a board, are feeling a sense of responsibility of, you know, 6,000 acres within our urban setting and really seeing that as home, you know, to not just people's concerns. And so I think that, you know, this would be something that I think we could do community engagement around as a park board.
Yeah.
To what percentage of risk are you comfortable with if we were to opt out of some of these treatments in various areas? Because we really do want to be able to, in a, in a good way, use the resources that we have to promote habitat and diversity within our urban setting, because we all know what a encouragement that is to people. So I would, I think it would be interesting to ask people their comfortability with some of these risk factors and have a discussion around this.
Yeah, I would love to partner with some public education with the Parks Board. And one thing I didn't get a chance to mention too is we do a lot of education surrounding ticks. We don't do any controls with ticks, but we do surveillance with ticks. And so with some parks, city parks and county parks, we'll do some tick education initiatives and signage at parks and stuff like that as well. So it's, getting the word out is extremely important, so I'd love to partner with anything.
Just to piggyback off that last question, my understanding was that public agencies are not able to opt out of treatment control on public lands? Did I misunderstand that in the legislation?
The legislation states that you can request to opt out, and then if there is disease activity, we may request to access certain lands. But as Parks Board, you're the stewards of your land, so.
So if it's a disease cause, we can't opt out? If it's nuisance control only, we can opt out?
Well, and I should say with disease control, it's if we find, you know, active disease cases. That's when, that's typically the time that we'll ask to access certain properties.
Okay, so we can reduce treatment and allow people to get sick, and then you can come in and tell us that was a terrible decision, and we're going to override what you did?
Well, hopefully, we'll partner on some sort of education campaign so everybody is, you know, being as safe as possible, but.
Commissioner Olson.
So you referred to the study on BTI that showed that it didn't impact bird or zooplankton or frogs. I'm wondering if there are any other studies around both the larval BTI stuff and also the spraying on what impacts, particularly also the spraying, on what impacts those have on bees, really other insects in general, and also, you know, birds for the spraying aspect of it, so.
Yeah, well, there's been a lot of research on pollinator habitat, mainly with mosquito control. The main concern that we have is protecting non-target insect species, because even the adult mosquito control products that we use are generally safe for people. You can be exposed, people can be exposed to it with very minimal health impacts, but the adult mosquito control species, or products are, could potentially harm non-target insect species. There's been vast studies on BTI, and it's found to be one of the most safe products available. Really only targets, in the pellet formulation, targets mosquitoes, and the liquid formulation, it targets gnats, black flies and fungus gnats, and really is pretty harmless to most other species. I don't have any studies off the top of my head, but I could send you some. The EPA has conducted some, various universities around the world have done some, and then then we have the one that we over helped with on our website as well.
I think you said you mostly use the pellets. Do you use, in that liquid, you decided it targets, it hits other species as well?
Yeah, we use the liquid BTI for biting gnats in rivers. So the biting, the black flies are the gnat species that come out in the springtime. And so we work with the DNR and they give us guidance on which rivers we should target that have a lot of black fly nuisance.
Do they, and that's nuisance, that's not disease?
Uh, it's nuisance for adults, it can cause some illnesses in children. And that's usually where, that's usually what's on the news is when a daycare has a bunch of kids with their necks bitten up and they all have fevers.
And so the sprays and the cold fogs, you did mention how you attempt to avoid pollinator areas, but that, I imagine there are studies that probably show that that does hurt all insects or?
Yeah, the main.
Sprays, it seems like it'd be hard to.
Yeah, we use pyrethroids, which is the only adult mosquito control that we use. So we, we don't use organophosphates or neonicotinoids, we've never used products like that, but pyrethroids, they can, if, if not used properly, they can have non-target impacts. So that's why we focus on larval control because if you can control them at the larval stage, it reduces your need for adult mosquito control when mosquito population is exploding or disease cases are in an area.
And so from what you know, if there, is there enough, if we, you know, really reduce, you know, without mosquitoes, do, you know, I guess it's food web, not food chain anymore, you know, other species that rely on insects to eat, is there enough out there for them to?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a question we get all the time, you know, the, the food web implications of mosquitoes. And so what we know is there's no species that's primary food source is mosquitoes. So there are species that eat mosquitoes, but there's no species that relies it as their number one food source. So there's been studies done on bats, bats prefer much larger insects like moths and beetles, give higher caloric intake and most bird species go to roost when mosquitoes are most active in the evening hours. And so there, there's, it's interesting, in parts of, parts of the world where mosquitoes are particularly deadly, they're doing some studies on what, what happens if you eradicate mosquitoes altogether. So we're obviously not interested in complete eradication. Our, our primary objective is public safety and make sure that we're giving people a good quality of life here in the Twin Cities.
Are there any other groups that do kind of research the entire ecosystem? They're like, okay, well, here's, we have, you know, 100 different types of insects here, so we know that there's a lot of food, so maybe if mosquitoes are a little lower, it's fine. Is there any groups that's kind of doing the, the whole big picture?
There are, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ones that you could find online. I know in Southern California and in Florida right now, they're doing some genetic modification for mosquito species, trying to eliminate specific species that are particularly dangerous to people and trying to eradicate that species altogether. So they're obviously doing a lot of, you know, they're working with the EPA and the FDA on doing the non-target impacts of that decision. So there, there's lots of, lots of studies like that out there.
Cool, thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Just one more quick, quick question. For those areas of the city that have opted out of treatment of their wetlands or wet areas, standing water areas, how often do you come and check on those areas just to kind of make sure that they're safe, make sure that there's not any issues that are rearing their, you know, causing a problem? I mean, what's kind of your pattern of supporting that opt out option?
Yeah, and most, most opt outs are private individuals opting out their private land. So it really kind of depends, if, if they have an area that we're really concerned about, we'll try to work with them to make sure that we have permission to access it every once in a while. For most cities, they're very familiar with what we do and so they, they're not going to opt out of wetland necessarily. The, most opt outs are for adult control. So saying that we're not going to do any adult mosquito control in an area because of hives or because cities doing a, you know, prairie restoration project and doing native plants and stuff like that. So those are usually the type of opt outs we have, but really for us, for me especially, it's just about open communication, like if, if there's information you need or if there's things that you would like us to do, just talking and kind of going through the process and making sure that any decisions are scientifically based and based on, you know, data and research and stuff like that. That's kind of the objective.
So you don't have a, a set protocol of once a month we come out or once a week?
No, it's just because the habitats are so different. So it really depends, like if, if there's an area that we're really concerned about, we'll try to work with that homeowner and say, we're going to come, you know, every once in a while.
All right.
But yeah, it really kind of depends on the location.
Thank you.
We get really minute, target specific all, all across the, the Twin Cities on where, so we, we kind of know where the problem areas are.
All right, I'm not seeing any additional questions, so thank you for your time this evening, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We do have your contact information, so if my colleagues come up with additional questions that they'd like to share with you, they know how to get in touch, as do the members of the public that have attended the meeting tonight and are watching us on TV. Have a great rest of your night, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
And seeing no objection, I am going to declare this committee adjourned.
The time is 7:35 and I'd like to call the Admin and Finance Committee together. Deputy Secretary, no, Secretary Ringgold, may you take the role?
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Menz, absent. Co-Chair Thompson.
Here.
Co-Chair Schaefer.
Here.
You have a quorum.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any not in favor? We have three items before us for action this evening. May I have a committee member, please bring forward the first resolution?
Sure, I'll move Resolution 2022-238, Resolution approving the COVID frontline worker pay for eligible, eligible members of the certified non-represented employee group.
Thank you very much. And Director Wiseman, if you may give us an update on this item.
All right, good evening, Chair Schaefer. We, before you, you have Resolution 2022-238. This is for the MPRB COVID frontline worker pay. Employee groups have requested that the MPRB consider a COVID frontline worker pay. Staff have monitored other governmental agencies and found other agencies that have approved a COVID worker pay for employee groups, especially those that have received direct ARPA allocations. They have used that allocation to support their workforces. And the examples that I saw immediately were Hennepin County and Ramsey County. The MPRB recognizes, recognized that employees are a valuable asset and commend their dedication and service to our park system. The superintendent implemented a telework policy for employees that took effect in September of 2021 and employees who are eligible can submit a request to telework up to two days per week. We recognize that not all employees are eligible to telework due to the nature of their work. We recommend a one-time payment be paid to frontline employees who are not eligible to telework. This is a one-time payment. The one-time payment is subject to contract negotiated, negotiations for represented employees. This resolution, if it is approved by a committee and moved to full board and approved by full board, would provide an MPRB COVID frontline worker pay to eligible certified non-represented employees. The COVID worker pay is a one-time payment that will be administered. A one-time payment will be made to all certified non-represented employee group members that are eligible employees. The employees are eligible if they were employed by the MPRB continuously from January 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2022, in a frontline position. And a frontline position is one that does not qualify for telework. The amount of the one-time payment will be $1,000 for employees in a full-time certified position and $500 for employees that are in part-time certified positions. Employees hired after January 1st, 2022 are not eligible for the MPRB COVID frontline worker pay. The frontline worker pay will be funded through the use of general fund excess fund balance if it is approved by this body. As of December 31st, the available excess fund balance is estimated at $648,000. Estimated cost for this one-time payment for all eligible employees and all employee groups, and again, represented employees are subject to their contract negotiations, is approximately $450,000. The estimated cost that is before you this evening for non-represented employees is approximately $20 to $30,000. The non-represented employee group is a smaller group. I looked through the eligible job title, or the, the job titles and made my best guesstimate of which ones would be not eligible for telework, but again, that would be the HR department and their supervisors that would make that ultimate final approval and decision on that. And I'll open it to questions.
Vice President Smith?
Thank you. So the non, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, the non-represented group, are the people that are not represented by the union or just different classifications of employees?
Chair Schaefer and Commissioner, or Vice President Schmidt, Smith, they are not represented by an, a union group.
Okay.
They're called, they're identified as non-represented full-time employees.
Awesome, thank you. And then one last question, how does this differ from the frontline pay that I saw the governor speaking about?
Chair Schaefer and Vice President Smith, this is different from the, the Minnesota frontline worker pay. A lot of cities have, or a lot of, or government entities have decided to do their own COVID pay and this would be in addition to the state COVID pay. If they were, if they qualified for both, they would be able to receive both.
Awesome, even better, they deserve it. One more question. This does include like part-time staff, correct? Or it's just based on the classifications that you're saying may be eligible for the telework?
It is certified part-time positions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I am just really thrilled that we're putting money, giving these, this compensation back to the employees in the time of really tough times where people were asked to be outside of their job description. I have one other question. You said most organizations that have given this money have used their ARPA funds. We are using ours from the excess of our general budget. Can you just talk a little bit about that history and, and why that happened?
Chair Thomas and Commissioners, we are not a recipient, a direct recipient of the federal ARPA dollars. The city of Minneapolis is. And so we had to, we had to apply for our ARPA dollars through the mayor's, mayor's and city council process.
And what did our ARPA dollars go for? Can you remind me?
We are, we are receiving ARPA funding for specific projects. So the first one is the youth investment, which in a, in a couple of resolutions, I'll have identified for you. And then also in Phase Two, we were approved for the North Commons Improvement Project at $3 million and then $1 million for tree planting in the next cup, in the next two years.
Thank you. Any other questions? We will take a vote on, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Quick question, maybe you know, I don't remember. So with the ARPA funding and it tied to North Commons, those dollars federally have to be used by a certain time. Will we meet that deadline where we are for projections for the plan for North Commons?
So Chair Thomas and Vice President Smith, there are, there is a deadline for ARPA dollars. They need to be under contract by December 31st, 2024 and need to be spent by December 31st, 2025. And I believe that the project managers and the planning division are very aware of those deadlines and will be utilizing those dollars quickly.
We will now take a vote on Resolution 2022-238. All those in favor of passing this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? Resolution 2022-238 passes. May I have a committee member, please move forward the next resolution?
I'll move Resolution 2022-228, Resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Benz Thompson Raito, I forgot if I pronounced that correctly, Incorporated, to provide architectural services for the Lake Harriet Banshell and Concessions Pavilion in the Chain of Lakes Regional Park for a fee not to exceed $294,000 and allocating excess operations and maintenance lottery and lieu proceeds, lottery and lieu of proceeds in the amount of $308,600.
Thank you, and I believe we have Director Swenson here, if he would like to give just a high-level overview of what, what those funds, it's exciting to see that there's some progress being moving forward on Lake Harriet.
Chair Schaefer, Commissioners, correct. So Benz Thompson Raito is a TMP vendor with us. Of course, you saw the report that we did on the Banshell. We're bringing them under contract. They are beginning contract documents here and our intention is to bid it here later this summer. The funding for, for the overall project, we will come back in August to, to give you kind of a summary of what funds we need and where we potentially will pull them for construction. Tonight, we're just showing you the funding that we are taking, or we require just to bring the consultant on board and to complete their work. Does that address?
That's fine, so it's the, it's just letting the, setting the groundwork for what's ahead.
Correct, we have a lot of work ahead of us and so we'll be, we'll be back before you, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, any other questions? Let's take a vote on res, oh, I'm sorry. Co-Chair Thompson?
She was first.
Sorry, Commissioner Bennie.
Thank you, Chair Schaefer. I'm not on this committee, so thanks for the chance to comment. I noticed in the materials for this item that the schedule was in there and it's, it's moving out, which is fine, I understand that, it's how procurement goes and all of these things. So I'm just hoping there's a, the website that's been put in place for communicating about the status of this project, if it can be kept up to date and move that start date out till the spring.
Chair Schaefer, Commissioner Bennie, we will do that. We just looked at some documents today and communication is helping us, Don Summerstaff, so we'll, we'll get all that up to date here quickly. We have some signs that'll be going up in the next week onsite, so it'll really start to give some of that history and kind of tighten up that timeline. The, the concern that we have is availability of some of the materials that are needed for the underlayment of the roofing, so that's why it's going to be adjusted. Plus, we would certainly like to overperform, underpromise and really overperform here on this project. We just want to make sure that we're letting the public know and that we do the very best we can.
I really appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Swenson, thank you.
Vice President Smith?
I just, I have, I know you said that, what is it, Benz Thompson and Raito are part of the Target Market Program, correct? Were there any other architectural firms that we engaged that had, I guess, a more diverse staff?
Chair Schaefer, Commissioner—Vice President Smith, thank you for asking that question. So we engage with a large number of TMP consultants that we have master—more—we call master contracts with. We did focus in on Benz Thompson Raito here for this project specifically because of their history with the project. I will ask—ask Benz Thompson Raito to see if there are subconsultants, you know, what the makeup of those subconsultants are, and I can report back to you directly.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Coach Chair Thompson?
Thank you so much. I just have a question, just that maybe you'll be able to answer, maybe Director Weisman would. In preparation of more to come, I am robustly enthusiastically supportive of fixing the Harriet Banshell, but I also know that word just came through yesterday of Hall Park and Farwell being delayed in—on the north side. And I know that we are going to be having to potentially, you know, shuffle some plates to be able to pay for things in a timely manner. Will that be part of—potentially part of the presentation in a month or a month and a half, six weeks, whatever, when this—will we be able to better understand the financial picture of what this—what the implications are?
Coach Chair Schaefer, Coach Chair Thompson, yes, that—that's our intention. It—it's not something, right, that we can just pull together, and there's going to be a lot of movement here of things that we'll have to explain to you and understand. Part of the discussion will be—even involve the 23 CIP—2023 CIP. So there'll be—a there'll be a lot of things that we'll be showing you, but yes. And I just want to say, Hall Park and Farwell, you know, we're committed to getting those built, same with—same with Jordan—Jordan Park. Really, I—I think with those two projects, just so—we're talking about it here, a little bit beyond your question, but you brought it up, is just—I think we—those two projects, we went out for bid at the wrong time. And really, we're trying to focus a number of projects and get them ready to go out for bid in January of 2023. We really think that we'll be getting the best pricing that we can. The materials that are being used at a lot of these site-related projects, we're not saying huge escalations in, right? They're not heavy in steel, they're not heavy in concrete, they're not heavy in wood. So we're—we're pretty confident if we can bid these at a right—at the right time, we'll achieve good pricing. We're very committed to getting those two projects done.
Thank you for that. I—I—I know any additional information and messaging is really helpful when it comes to the community on the north side, so thank you. That's it for me.
Any further questions? We will take a vote on Resolution 2022-23228. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? That resolution passes. May I have a committee member please bring forward the next resolution?
Sure. I will move Resolution 2022-241, Resolution requesting the Board of Estment Taxation set the maximum property tax levy for the 2023 budget at an estimated amount of $79,025,000, an increase of 6.16%.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, and thank you Director Weisman for introducing this resolution.
All right. Good evening again, Chair Schaefer and Commissioners. So before you is the Resolution requesting the Board of Estment and Taxation set the maximum property tax levy. So before we get into the details of the Resolution itself, I wanted to provide a brief recap of the Board budget retreats that you all attended and provided great information, which helped us build this maximum property tax levy request. The first thing that you did was identify issues and opportunities within the park system that could utilize or shift funding. And then you also identified new funding sources to be explored. The next step that we took in Day 2 was from the issues and opportunities listing, you identified what were your top areas to consider within the 2023 budget process, and also to identify those things that potentially would become your legacy and be items that we would work on over the next four years. And then we also had a conversation around the maximum property tax levy request and the range that this board would potentially support for this request. So this next slide identifies those budget priorities and one legacy item that had property taxes as a funding source identified. A lot of these had multiple funding sources, but we pulled up to the top the priorities that received the most consensus among the board, and then also identified property taxes as a source. So we heard very loud and clear, even with the number of Post-it notes, that strategic direction D, care for park assets to meet evolving needs and practices, is definitely foremost on Commissioners' minds. And two particularly rose to a higher level among the other priorities that were listed. And the first one is to increase staff capacity of the planning division to enhance implementation of our current CIP and allocation and spending of the park dedication fees. And then the second item was around the implementation and increasing our staff capacity to implement the full lifecycle asset management across all assets. Another item that we heard is really under strategic direction B, cultivate each community's place and honor cultural traditions in Minneapolis parks. And that is around increasing safety and security in parks. And it identified Park Police Department, Park Patrol Agents, police officers, and so that was included. And then there were two others, strategic direction A, act boldly for our climate future, where we wanted to spend—we want to start spending on climate now to avoid higher costs later. And then strategic direction E, steward our natural resources, natural resource management and stewardship for habitat, invasive species mitigation, and ecosystem health. You will notice that strategic direction D and strategic direction B are blue. Those are just to highlight for you that the maximum property tax levy that is before you includes elements of those three items. And we'll talk, you know, further about LGA, but there was some—there were some constraints where we were unable to fund everything that the Commissioners would like to have funded through property taxes in this first attempt as—a at a maximum property tax levy. So the highlighted items in blue are the ones that are being moved forward as recommendations for you to consider this evening. We also talked about the revenue sources and legacies. So this, again, is work that will be done over the next four years, and these are the three items that pulled—rose to the top with the priority setting that evening. So our maximum property tax levy request, some context. The Board would like to see movement towards the implementation of the Board's adopted 2023 to 2026 strategic directions, and discuss—and discussed maximum property tax levy increase in the range of 5.37%, which was our identified current service level, to 8% from 2022. Just as a reminder, the Mayor and the City Financial projections estimated NPRB property tax levy request increase of 4.27%. The difference between the 4.27 and the 5.37 is we include our system equity investment in our current service level, and the City and the Mayor does not include that in their estimates for us. This chart also shows the buildup of the Minneapolis Park Youth Investment over the next five years, and the elimination of—or the slow decrease in the ARPA funding with its ending in 2024. And then also, our current state law results in a reduction to local government aid of approximately $570,000. So this is what our general fund 2023 to 2027 projection currently looks like. We are recommending a 6.16% property tax levy increase. We have reduced local government aid by the dollar amount reduced in—by the state law. We show the reduction in the American Rescue Plan. We show the increase in property taxes for our youth investment, and then all of our increases on the expenditure side. So our revenue increases by 3.7 million, and that's the increases and the decreases. And then we have our provision for wage and benefit adjustments of 2.1 million, that's how part of the usage. We have our provision for contractual services and material and supplies, so that's our inflationary factor of just under $730,000. And then we have our two items that are being built in. Our system equity investment first is focusing on safety and security needs due to the activation and increased uses of parks within the downtown service area and regional park system. It also includes some smaller residual costs associated with the prior year activation of new park locations. So as new park locations have come online, we have built in parkkeepers for maintenance, crew leaders, we've built in recreation supervisors, front desk staff for the activation of the programming at these parks. And the piece that we haven't built in yet is the park safety and security. So this year is when we are recommending that increase for the park safety and security, and that includes two police officers, a conversion of two part-time Park Patrol Agents to full-time positions, and some additional part-time Park Patrol Agents hours specifically for Worth Regional Park and the Trailhead Building, and part-time positions for front desk staff, which will shore up the—the activation of the North Loop Park. And then for strategic direction D, care for our park assets to meet evolving needs and practices, it includes two project manager positions and one system analyst position. One of these positions is in the planning department, and then the other positions would be in the asset management department. And this will provide professional management support as the NPRB moves to identify and implement an asset management lifecycle for all asset types within the NPRB system. The addition of these three positions will allow for the maximum—maximization of existing funding for maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, and capital. It will also provide focused attention on the underfunded regional park system as state funding has not met statutory requirements, resulting in property taxes—property tax support being sought. So those are the items that make up our general fund summary for 2023. The system equity investment, again, you can see that we have built in system equity investment out through 2027. We have Upper Harbor Terminal, we have Greco Park, both of which will be coming online towards the end of 2024 and into 2025. So we're building in some capacity to increase staffing for those areas. So our maximum property tax levy request is $79,025,000. It's a change of four point—almost $4.6 million. It's a 6.16% increase for the park board. On the overall city tax, it—it equates to 1.1%. So all things being equal, the 6.16% is an increase of about $17 on a median value home, which at this point is $316,000. However, of course, this increase may be greater because of changes in the tax base, and we talked about that at the budget retreat. Every 1% increase in property taxes generates 700—just under $740,000 for the NPRB, and is about an increase of $3 on a median value home. So this slide is my last slide and—and an important slide as we enter into—if this body approves this maximum tax levy, and we enter into discussions with the Mayor and City staff and the Board of Estment and Taxation members. So we start with the City's projection for us at 4.27%, and we add in the LGA decrease based on the current state of Minnesota formula. We are requesting that property taxes be raised in order to support that reduction, to protect our neighborhood park maintenance, our youth investment, all of those things that have been built into our current service level. We want to have that protected. If the State should correct itself and we don't receive this reduction, we just wouldn't ask for the maximum, because of course, the maximum tax levy is the maximum. So by the end of the year, when we're adopting our budget, if this is not needed, we would not need to ask for it, and we could reduce the property tax levy by that dollar amount. But we want to have it built into the maximum tax levy request. If it's not built in, then we can't ask for it later. And then again, the system equity investment for safety and security, and then the strategic direction D, care of our park assets. And that gets us to the $79,025. And with that, I will entertain questions.
Thank you, Director Weisman. Does anybody have—want to start us off on questions? Vice President Smith?
Absolutely. If we can go back to your slide where you talk about security—system equity and investment, and we talk about adding two FTE officers and then two—converting two part-time officers to full-time, so for grand total of what looks like four new additional officers to the Park Patrol, is that correct or no?
Chair Schaefer and Vice President Smith, it would be an addition of two sworn police officers, and then it would be the conversion of two part-time Park Patrol Agents to full-time Park Patrol Agents. So you'd have two Park Patrol Agents and two sworn police officers.
And then we'll have a .75 FTE agent as well as a 1.25 FTE for the front desk. Is that the front desk here in terms of the park police force, or is that—when you say that, are you applying—implying front desk at our park facility, like actual part-time staff?
So Chair Schaefer and Vice President— So Chair Schaefer and Vice President Smith, this is the result of the prior year additional, addition of parks in North Loop specifically. And there is a call for having a, a, what is it called? A storefront or a? Yeah, having a community connection spot at North Loop. And this would provide part-time front desk staff to activate that site and be on location at that new neighborhood park.
And, but this doesn't offer any current support to our current parks that have security and safety concerns as it stands today and in the future?
So Vice?
Outside of the cops.
So? This is addressing the police safety and security. And currently, what is happening right now because of the expansion of the downtown service area, we are pulling police officers from northeast and north are servicing that downtown service area. So in essence, if we provide this staffing to the downtown service area, then northeast and north Minneapolis will have better coverage as well.
Okay. Have we considered not using police and instead using our violence interruption team that the park actually has outside of the City of Minneapolis Office of Violence Prevention for downtown specifically, given that it's in downtown and they have a significant amount of financial resources compared to north, northeast, and south?
Um.
You may not be able to answer that, so it's okay.
Are you talking about the, are you talking about the violence prevention from the City of Minneapolis doing our?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about our teams. So like, we have teen team works, and I can't remember the name of the?
Community connection.
Thank you.
Got it.
The other folks that are leading and helping to engage.
Chair Schaefer, thank you. Chair Schaefer and Vice President Smith, the reduction in our officers over the last several years has really impacted our police department and their work, that they do within communities. So what you see a lot of times is that the one thing we hear constantly is our officers being able to do truly community policing or be stopping in facilities or being in buildings. What we have is that reduction or that amount of time that officers can spend in our communities doing the work that they do within, again, most of the work they do within our parks. We are, we're not even at where we should be and our officers do the work they're doing. As Director Weisman said, most of the officers right now are spending time in the downtown area, and they're being diverted there because of the need in that space, which then takes them away from the work that they need to do, keeping our parks safe within north Minneapolis or some of these areas that we need to have our officers. Sometimes you'll see a squad car that'll sit within a park, but then can't spend a lot of time there because they have to respond and go somewhere else. This is building up the need that we need with our officers to respond to crime, to be able to do the work they need to do within our community. Our community connections and bond presence team, they're doing the work every day. We have the folks that right now are in the department. We have a capacity and number that are doing really good work, and there's, and there's that bridge that continues to be doing, and we continue to build on that. And the budget within that department is solid. There isn't, we're now looking at what we can do to build that and continue to grow it, but the budget is good. What we fail and where we not, and we don't have the money, was, is within our police department and the officers that are needed to deal with, as we know, level-one crimes or even basic crimes. So really, this is our way of building up our, our police department that has been reduced over the last three years and to get them just at where they, where they need to be, not even beyond their current level, but just to get them back up to where we need our officers to do the work they need to do within our, within our, our city. And in particular, if we get these officers here based on this budget, we then are able to utilize our officers back where they need to be and doing the work in predominantly even the north side or upper south, in particular because the way that downtown has been incredibly busy and having officers, and we pull officers away from what they need to do in other parts of the city.
Okay. Have we considered taking financial support from the downtown council, considering they raised a significant amount of money for public safety for downtown, so that they could eat the cost of $385,000 without blinking an eye?
Chair Schaefer and Vice President Smith, we have not engaged particularly with the downtown council. I think that we are looking at our budget and what we can do within our organization at this time, and that has been our focus. The challenge that we have, like anything, is if we go to any dollars, there's no guarantee. What I know is that when we speak to the mayor and we start to talk about what this board requires based on a very specific kind of ask, we know that that, that's what we can negotiate in our taxing authority and negotiate with the governor, with the mayor. Other things that we do, we always look at other opportunities that we can to build resources around our, our organization. But what we do know is that the trigger that we pull, the lever that we pull, is through our property tax to support in perpetuity our officers and to get those FTEs into place. Everything else is kind of more of a, more of a challenge and not necessarily a guarantee.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Vice President Smith, did you have more questions?
I have a thousand more questions, but we will not get to them.
Okay. Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I just, I would just like to echo Vice President Smith's concerns and questions. And did I kind of hear right there Superintendent Bangora that part of the reason we're putting forward FTEs for two police officers is because we think it will get support from the mayor and the board? Is that, did I hear that right, or did I misinterpret that?
Superintendent Bangora?
Thank you. Chair Schaefer and Commissioner Olson, the focus that I know in the conversation we have, and I think this is why we're bringing forward what we have here, is that, that several things we heard, safety is a really important piece that has been talked about in the city, and safety is really critical. And so we believe, and I believe that as I go into these conversations with the mayor or in ultimately in the BET, is that when we talk about safety of our parks, safety of our city, I think it is a very powerful discussion to have is what we need as far as officers for safety around our parks. I don't know where, yet until our conversation with the mayor, where that's going to land, but it is something that clearly has been discussed and talked about within the city as far as safety being a really primary concern within our parks and within the city.
Yeah, and you know, I, there was a recent study that in the U.S., the, like, the, the success rate, the closure rate of murder investigations is now down to like 50% across the nation. It's like 50/50. And I've also seen several studies where, you know, officers, police officers don't necessarily prevent as much crime as we think they, we think more officers equals a direct link in, in reduction of crime. And that's just really, that's not the case. It's not a one-for-one. And so kind of in that investigation aspect, you know, and you were saying these officers are going to be doing kind of, you know, tier-one stuff and just, you know, triage You know, was there thought to, I know we have detectives, and at first I was kind of thinking, why does the park board have, you know, our own detectives? But, you know, we're, we're having these shootings, we're, we're having people who are, you know, it's like a needle in the haystack of, you know, having an officer in the right place and in the right park to prevent this sort of stuff. And so I'm wondering if, you know, kind of, also kind of, again echoing Vice Chair Smith's concerns, but also wondering, you know, why maybe isn't there a focus on, you know, the backend of actually solving these things? Because the folks who are, you know, perpetuating, you know, violence are often, it's the same few people. And so finding them is much more important than preventing things. And so I'm wondering if within our association within the City of Minneapolis, if there's any discussion of doing more of that backend, kind of the real investigative police work of, I mean, it's all real, I shouldn't, it's all real, but the, you know, the work of, you know, finding who did the shooting, right? Is that what these officers are going to be doing, or is that, would that be more under a detective role? Because if that's more under a detective role, I think that might be more valuable, in my opinion. So I'm just, and I know Chief Ohado might know this more too, but I'm just wondering if you, if, if finding these folks will be ameliorated by two additional officers?
Chair, Chair Schaefer and Commissioner Olson, yeah, I wish, it would be good to have Chief Ohado here, but what I can say is this, is that we do have investigator within our, our ranks, within our police department. What again, we're talking about here is having enough officers to do the work that we need them to do. We have been depleted, and we have been a loss of officers just to be able to deal with the amount of things that, you know, our park system requires, and then what we look at for our officers to do the work that they need to do. So we're at a deficit. We are, it would, if Chief Ohado was here right now, he would say very clearly that we are struggling just to keep up with the, not only the system equity investment that we have parks that we need to pay attention to, we are already lower than our normal level of what we need for officers. This is not going beyond our, our ready capacity that we have and our number. We are, we're below that. So the officer that we're talking about is being able to do the good work in the community that they need to do, to be able to respond to crimes, be able to stop into buildings, be able to truly do community policing. Right now, we're responding in a lot of ways to places. We're going from across the city, across, back and forth, really addressing a lot of the crime that happens within the parks, but ultimately, just the community engagement piece of it, where we're actually doing community, community work and engaging community and being able to stop into facilities. That's what we're missing now at this time. So really, the officers we're talking about here, they do the good work every day. I can tell you the number of emails that I get every day of the work that they're doing, whether it's saving lives and just doing great police work. But we do have investigators that do, that deal with crime, whether it's theft of vehicle or theft in a car, whatever it might be, we have investigators, our investigator, they do the work to investigate those crimes. But just having officers in our parks doing the work and making sure our parks are safe, that is the primary focus of this. So the question is, if, if we're continuing to work that we do for investigations, yes, we do. But these officers are just adding to our department that we need for officers to be in our parks and be present.
Yeah, sure, we'll have lots more discussion on this, but thank you for, for all of that. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Co-Chair Thompson?
Thank you so much. I don't know that I have a question so much as I would just like to respond to some of the things that have been said, and then maybe a question will percolate in my mind. I, I, obviously, things were not ideal on the Fourth of July in our city and in our parks. And as, as Co-Chair Schaefer spoke out in her time, it, I would agree, it does, it does change your perspective when you are a citizen versus a commissioner and you find out that violent acts happened in the parks. I actually went for a run today, and I ran past a makeshift, I actually, oh, I actually might start crying. I ran past a makeshift cross tied on a tree off of, of, of the, the running path on Theo Worth Parkway. And, and that's never lost on me. So I guess I would like to say that, although I know that the downtown council probably has a lot more money than, than we do, I don't know, but we are one city. And we as a body, whether it's the park board or the, or the city government, we are the, the best equity arbiter for our city. I, I know that people know that more affluent areas are, it's making the newspaper, they are hiring their own private security. My neighbors can't do that. I can't do that. So as a, as a governing body, I feel like this is, we are doing our part in trying to be honest about the situation that our city is in without over asking, because I know that it's a tense situation. So as I was sitting here listening, I, I respect the questions, and I also respect the direction that we're trying to take. So I, I mean, maybe it's a foregone conclusion as I'm speaking that I support this investment into officers, and I support the, the view. And I do hope that the mayor and others in the BET can recognize that our ask is, it's, it's a large ask for the entirety of the city. We're not asking for, for more to, you know, fix the Harriet Banchell, although I'm sure we would love to do a lot of different stuff. We're saying, hey, we're doing things to be a team player and all this stuff. So that's all I'd like to say. Look, I kept it under three minutes. It's my, my background as an actor, three-minute monologue. Okay, over.
Thank you, Co-Chair Thompson. I appreciate your sharing your thoughts. Commissioner Elper?
Thank you for recognizing me, even though I'm not on this committee. I just, a couple of questions come to mind. Are there open police department positions right now? I recollect that being the case.
Chair Schaefer and Commissioner Elper, yes, there are several park police officer vacancies right now, and we have been reaching out to the academies to get people into the academies.
Thanks. So that leads me to my next question, which is, you know, I, I guess I really wanted, want to know from you as staff if you believe that allocating more funding towards our police department, which, you know, I'm definitely hearing from you that it's needed. Will we, do you believe we will be able to use that money? I, I just, will we be able to hire? I know this is, this is a big issue with police departments and hours, MPD, or, or will that be better put somewhere where we can actually make use of it? Curious your thoughts.
Sure.
Superintendent Bangora?
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer and Commissioner Elper, yes, we will be able to use those. We, we need to get our officers or our police department to appoint to where we can have it at the level we need to, to be able to respond and do, do the work we need to do within our, our, our parks, and particularly around safety. So yes, you know, Chief Ohado does a fantastic job at looking at all opportunities for recruiting, for either cadets or looking at the pool of folks that we've been hiring and getting into our police department, not only from within our police department, from agents that also then worked their way to become an officer. So we, yes, we, we know we need to get the level or get our officers at the certain level in our department, but we would be able to, we will be able to use that, those dollars and get those officers hired into our, into our organization. What I will say is that it takes, if Chief was here, he would talk about the time that it takes to get someone on board. It's, it's significant. Once you have to go through the recruitment, the hiring, then get them into the academy, and so it takes months. So it's important that from this, as we're proposing here, not only do we have folks that we're trying to hire now, but do we get the months that it will take for us to get the next officers on board into our organization? But yes, I do feel very, I'm confident that we'll have officers in place and that the dollars will be used, obviously, for officers to get them to the level that we need.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I definitely, I definitely am hearing you about the need, and I think it's that, that piece that we have open positions right now. So allocating more funding towards that doesn't necessarily, you know, solve the issues of not getting an applicant pool, so, but I appreciate you, your, your, that commitment that you've, you've just expressed. And I also would like to just say that I appreciate the fact that we're moving part-time roles to full-time. I think that is something across the system where we have a lot of part-time positions and can be very difficult to fill, and I hope we're looking at that in other areas as well. I just had one other question, and that was, could you clarify one, one more time the project manager positions and system analyst position? Which one was with, with planning? Which one was with asset management?
Chair Schaefer and Commissioner Chair Schaefer and Commissioner Elper, it is two project managers, one in the planning division and one in the asset management, environmental stewardship division, and then one system analyst that would be in the environmental stewardship division. And I just want to just clarify, because I don't know if a direct answer was given to Commissioner Olson. The system equity investment for safety and security has been planned for, for the last three years. It's been built into our current service level. We're just reaching that place now. So, it's not directly related to whether we think the mayor will support it or not. It was something that was planned.
Any other questions? President Forney?
So, you go ahead.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, Commissioner, Chair Schaefer. Thank you, President Forney. Want to also make sure it clears that the- We look at performance goals. One of the performance goals that's been very clear that this board has put forward requires more staffing to accomplish that goal. So, I just want to make sure I address that. That is part of our performance goal that is before us. And so, I just want to also make sure that I address that, too.
Thank you. President Forney?
Thank you, Co-Chair Schaefer. I'm not on this committee, so appreciate being involved in the conversation. And I guess I just want to remind people that what we're talking about today is actually the levy, and we're not talking about our budget. I mean, in the sense of, we will have every opportunity to go through every fine line and tweak this and tweak that and everything. And based upon what we did in the budget retreat, this is what staff is suggesting will accomplish those things. And it's a levy. That's all that we're talking about today. So, first of all, I would really would love to have, I'm taking pictures, anyway, a copy. I, I think that it's important for us all to have that so that we're aware, you know. If you can send those out to us, I'd appreciate it. Anyway, I, I'm very thrilled, you know, with what you've come forward with. It seems to touch, you know, the things that people have expressed are of interest. And it's also incredibly reasonable percentage. Remind everybody that we have an inflation rate of 8.5, so 6.16 is, sounds really great. Anyway, so, I, I hope that we're getting people's questions answered. And I, I know the policing is a very sensitive issue, but reminder that it's only two police officers and two patrol agents who don't carry guns, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, anyway, just a reminder of that. And just the fact that I think whoever said it and everything, the fact that we're elevating somebody from a part-time to a full-time, I think is, is very significant in this day and age. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, President Forney. Director Wiseman, did you have some comments?
Chair Schaefer, I just apologize that I didn't say the number-one thing that I always say at the beginning of my presentations. This PowerPoint, as well as the priority and legacy information with all the prioritization and the funding sources, that big 11-by-17 document, will be posted on the Park Board website at wwwminneapolisparks.org/budget. And I will also email it to all commissioners tomorrow. So, it'll be available both places.
Thank you, Director Wiseman. And I'm really appreciative as well of this level of detail. You know, to come to a number, we have to have an idea of where those buckets are coming from. And I think it's very clear, safety and this expanded footprint of our parks is, is part of this increase that we're asking for. So, I would like to go ahead and take a motion for, I mean, to take a vote on this resolution that we have brought forward. Okay, I'm looking for, I'm switching between my tabs here, what the resolution number is again here. We are going to take a vote on Resolution 2022-241. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any of those not in favor? Resolution 2022-241 passes, and the Admin Finance Committee is adjourned.
It's still light out.
Well, and that number, that levy number, could come down if they give us the LGA back. It looks big, but it's not necessarily going to be that big.
What are you talking about? I was struggling over tonight. I felt tired.